I don't have any audio. Athena. Athena, I'm getting no volume.
Can you mute yourself?
I was muted. I see that Alicia was able to connect to audio, but I'm still not hearing any of you.
Oh, hello, Pat. I can hear you, but I can't hear anyone else either. So I was just kept logging off and back in because I thought it was something wrong with my computer.
It's nice to hear your voice.
Me too. It's good to see you. Well.
Yeah. But yeah.
I'll be on in just a moment.
Okay, take your time because I don't know what's going on.
Pat, can you hear us now? We can see your lips moving, but you're muted.
I am finally muted. Probably serves me right.
So you can.
I can hear you. And some speak.
We can hear you.
And I can hear you. Excellent. Thank you.
Alicia, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear everyone now.
Okay. All right. Thank you. There's no chat room for this meeting. If there's technical issues, we'll determine what to do at that time. Please, if you want to make a comment or ask a question, use the raised hand button. And so forth. During the meeting, there will be one general public comment period. The agenda is as presented, except for the fact that we will deal with the presentation and discussion items after the action items. Just very briefly, if you could put the announcements up on the screen, I want to add to them. Our next town council meeting is on January thirteenth at six thirty. At that time, we will have a public forum on appropriations outside the budget, and we will have a regular town council meeting. There are committee meetings, however, between now and then. December seventeenth CRC is meeting at six thirty. The finance committee is meeting at on tomorrow, the seventeenth, three o'clock. GOL is meeting on Thursday at six thirty and again on January ninth. And TSO is meeting on December nineteenth at ten o'clock and also January sixteenth. I just want to remind you that we do have the Sip and Stroll sponsored by the Bid this Thursday in town from four to seven. And also, we have the reading of the Kwanzaa proclamation on December twenty sixth at five P M. On the steps of the town hall. There's no hearing. So with that, we're going to move to general public comment. If you are in the room, please make sure that you've signed up with Athena O'Keefe. If you're in the audience and you would like to make general public comment, please raise your hand at this time.
In the Zoom audience.
In a moment, I'll ask how many people we have for public comment, but not yet. Meantime, public comments are matters within the jurisdiction of the town council. Residents are welcome to express their views, and I'll decide on how long once I know how many people are going to comment. The council will not engage in a dialogue or comment on a matter raised during general public comment. Public comments are not reflective of the opinions of the town council. I do want to draw attention to the fact that once we close, take the agenda off the screen, there's a clock. The clock will let you know when you are at thirty seconds out and also fifteen. The First Amendment broadly protects individual rights to address the government, to speak and to express themselves, including their right to say hateful and offensive things. I am generally unable to shut those commenters down under the First Amendment to the U.S. Constitution, unless their level of speech falls within an exception articulated by the courts, such as fighting words, true threats to a particular individual, harassment of a particular individual, or incitement of imminent lawlessness activity, lawless activity. If a question exists as to whether a particular speaker is engaging in unprotected speech, I must defer to the principles of the freedom of speech. We'll recognize speakers in the order in which they have signed up, rotating between Zoom and in person. Athena, how many people have signed up?
I have twelve. Twelve.
Twelve. We're going to limit public comment to two minutes. There are two people on Zoom. I'm going to start with the people on Zoom and then move to the audience. Alexa Lopez, please enter the room, state your name, and generally where you live.
Hi, my name is Alex Lopez. I live in South Amherst on Potline. And I've lived in various places in the country that unfortunately have seen their better days come and go. It's really interesting to see how people reclaim those empty spaces, those factories that no longer work. I think we're all familiar with the Rust Belt. What I'm worried about is the direction of this town is heading into an intellectual Rust Belt, where we have all these monuments to these great thinkers, these great academics and intellectuals. And yet we can't fund the next generation of those same intellectuals in this town. So when we look at our schools and the ongoing budget crisis that happens year after year, and the role that this town council has, the role that our local institutions have, I really am afraid that we are slowly marching ourselves to a place where we say, oh, look how great it used to be here. Look how much we used to be able to do for learners here. And we're unable to do that for our future generations. As the parent to three kids who are in that future generation, I am terrified at the cuts that are happening at the elementary school level, at the middle and high school level. And I do not think that this council should kid itself into believing they are not part of making those cuts happen.
Thank you for joining us, Alex. We'll go back to, we'll go to the room.
Karen Baker.
Please make sure the green light is on at the thing. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Karen Baker. I'm a teacher at Summit Academy. I'm asking you to fund our schools. And my founder's bit. I see a pattern in the year by year surpluses in the Amherst town budget. In twenty nineteen, there was a surplus of two point eight million. In twenty twenty, one point six million. In twenty twenty one, five point one million. Twenty twenty two, four point six million. Twenty twenty three, six point one million. And twenty twenty four, five point seven million. These surpluses are large and get larger year by year. I understand that one-time funds can't be used for ongoing expenses, but these are clearly not one-time funds. Rather, these are six separate consecutive times that there was an increasingly, basically increasingly large surplus. I understand that surpluses help with our bond rating. Thus, they provide a future benefit, and that's a consideration. I'm thinking that we could continue to keep some surplus each year while allocating more money to cover the costs of our schools. There are millions of dollars here. Leave a few million, take a few million. We'd maintain a surplus and a good bond rating, ensuring that type of benefit to our future. And we would benefit our future through the education of our children. What could be better for our future than that? There's more than enough money in Amherst to cover the costs needed to restore positions and programs that have been cut. That's right. I'm not asking for level services. I'm asking for enough money to restore services that have been cut. There have been too many cuts to accept things as they are, and it's absolutely absurd to ask our schools after so many years of cuts to cut even more. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Athena, the clock is not doing the alerts.
The time didn't run out, but you could see that it was turning red.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Arlie, please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Arlie Gould, South Amherst. A couple of months ago, I spoke to you about the names calling that was going on around the library issue. Well, I have two more to add. Nitwit and agitator. Nitwit is another word for stupid, and that's par for the course these days with the level of discourse. Call somebody who you just, who disagrees with you stupid, and boy, do you sound clever. The other one, agitator, is quite a bit stronger. To call taxpaying citizens of the town who are practicing freedom of speech, freedom of the press, and participating in local democracy, agitator says more about the town manager than anyone else. This is the man who I've heard say three times now that he only pays attention to votes, votes of the town council and votes in the, in the town. By this logic, he doesn't pay attention to the emails he receives, to the public comments at meetings, or to the discussions with the people at his Cup of Joe meetings. You know, I don't know why he has them if he's not paying attention to them. But he's not alone in these types of feelings. I've read a lot in the local newspapers of writers who feel frustrated about people who can't just accept that they've lost. They lost the, you know, town vote. Why don't you just sit down and be quiet? Well, by this logic, we just elected Donald Trump. We should all just sit down and be quiet while he enacts his policies for our country. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us, Arlie. Back to the room.
Georgia Malcolm.
Georgia Malcolm, and I work at the high school, and I'm president of the A P E A. You know, as one of the things I found interesting is that the, that the mission of the Amherst Finance Committee is to advise the town council on all financial matters, particularly with respect to values such as diversity, equity, and inclusion. However, the very values that you emphasize seem to be in direct conflict with the lack of investment in our schools, institutions that are increasingly diverse and in need of support. Families who can afford it are moving their children to private schools. Uncharted schools are expanding their reach. But our public schools, once known for their excellence, are now struggling. It is well documented that diverse schools often face financial hardship. And the decline of our public education system in Amherst is no exception. Research consensus shows that as schools become more racially and economically diverse, resources tend to be depleted, resulting in a widening achievement gap. According to a twenty twenty two report from the Economic Policy Institute, schools in areas with higher poverty and diversity levels often face challenges such as larger class sizes, fewer resources, and reduced staff, all of which affect the quality of education. Amherst is a microcosm of a larger troubling trend in Amer- in America, where educational disparities are exacerbated by race and income. According to the U.S. Department of Education, schools with higher proportions of students from low-income households and students are of color are more likely to experience underfunding and face greater challenges in providing equal opportunities. This is precisely what we're seeing in our schools. And you know, I really want to say shame on you guys. My son is here. He's not too happy with me. He was a student speaker at your inauguration, and he reminded you, you are to listen to the voice of the people, not just some, but everyone. And the teachers are asking for students, and I'm not, no. The teachers, you guys always, this is, this is, this is problematic because a few people come out, and then you just silence out with this two minutes. This is important. This is important, and I hate that it's some kind of white supremacy culture, and you guys need to stop it. You know what I'm saying? You guys only training. It's problematic. You're not listening. The person before just said Paul said he's only listening to you guys. I mean, I, you know, you guys really are infuriating because you put out these talking points about diversity. But you're not invested. I mean, you, I just got, someone showed me something that there's, there's some kind of survey going on because they want to renovate the town of Amherst. I mean, it's just like, it's, you know, like I said, it's like a garbage van that literally looks good, and when you peel it away, it's just.
Ariel Templeton.
Hello, my name is Ariel Templeton. I am a resident of Amherst. We've been a homeowner in Amherst since two thousand and six. My husband and I both work for the schools. I'm the band teacher at the elementary schools. My husband teaches orchestra at the middle school and high school. We have an eleven-year-old and a thirteen-year-old, and we are very invested in the district. But it's been very frustrating watching the lack of the support our district has from the town year after year. I subbed in the district twenty years ago, and the programs that we offered at the middle school and high school far surpassed what we have now. We have far fewer programs, but we have many more students with higher needs, and we're not able to serve them well. And so I'm asking that you please, please fund our schools. We personally, on a personal note, we have a son who's in a private middle school right now, and we're planning to bring him back to the high school next year, but we're, we're concerned because a lot of the programs that we want him to experience may not be able to happen if the proposed budget cuts happen if we don't get the funding from the town. So if we're concerned, and we both work for the district, I can't imagine what other families are feeling, and I know that a lot of parents are pulling their kids if they can. But it's not equitable. Please, please fund our schools. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us.
Elizabeth Pritel.
Good evening. I'm gonna have to read because I know I only have two minutes. My name is Elizabeth Patel. I'm the mother of two children raised here through the Amherst Public School System. I've lived and paid property taxes in Amherst for seventeen years. I've even voted for some of you. And it's now my twelfth year serving as an educator at Wildwood Elementary School. I and many other parents chose to raise our families in this town because it was a thriving educational hub. The school system is still the primary reason families moved to our town. In Wildwood, we just welcomed two new students this week. It just, they're coming. They're still coming by. Let's show them. Sorry. Let's show them, these families, that they're still making the right decision when they do so by reinvesting in the quality education that we pride ourselves in. It's often been said that a community is measured by how well it cares for its children and its most vulnerable. Teachers and paraeducators and all our staff are the frontline vanguards for that care. Our educators nurture our town's youth. They uplift our town's youth and therefore uplift the town itself. It's this town defunds, for example, our school libraries by not funding its paraeducators. They're defunding our youth's ability to imagine their future. When this town defunds our arts programs, they're defunding our children's right to express themselves. Some educators are forced to take secondary jobs to supplement their cost of living, which compromises their ability to give their all to the students they desperately want to see flourish. I implore the town council to release and redirect the town's surplus funds towards educational investments that provide decent building infrastructure, that that children can feel safe and welcome in our schools, in our classrooms. I implore the town council to redirect these funds towards expanding our paraeducator teams to provide equal access education
We need you to scrap up.
and the bright future for all our youth.
Thank you for joining us.
Jennifer Jensen.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Jensen. I'm a teacher at the middle school, and good evening, town council. With the five point seven million dollar surplus, we have a unique opportunity to invest in our schools. Our educational system is the foundation for a thriving future, and it's essential we ensure our schools are equipped to meet the needs of today's students and staff. Allocating some of the surplus to education will improve learning environments, fund necessary improvements, and support both staff and students. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for considering this important step in securing a brighter future for our community.
Thank you for joining us.
Vince O'Connor.
Vincent O'Connor, one seventy-five Summer Street, apartment twelve. I'll read only two of the five paragraphs in my prepared statement. It is very difficult for parents, guardians, educators, and others involved in the lives of children in Amherst Public Schools to read the council's seven-page proposed F Y twenty-six operating budget guidelines and see that the one detail of local public education funding specifically mentioned and repeated again essentially begs the manager, begs the manager, in effect, that if there are any financial table scrap available, please go along with what our partners, communities in grades seven through twelve regional school districts have insisted on since April. These guidelines for a single unelected administrator who has personally cut both school budgets in the past two years and concealed budget surpluses that could have made each of them whole are a disgraceful insult to the children, parents, and guardians and educators in both public school districts. I urge the council to reject these guidelines and demand fairness for public education in their operating budget guidelines. Finally, I want to reiterate my support for more F Y twenty-five this year funding on roads and sidewalks and school. I agree on this issue with Council Ryan, but my support is conditional on an equivalent amount being appropriated to the public school district. With each amount being included in as the base for each school's F Y twenty-six budget. From a five point seven million dollar F Y twenty-four surplus, there is no need to get to pit money for roads and sidewalks against money for school.
Thank you for joining us. Athena.
I'm trying to read the next name. Yes.
I just saw here.
Please speak to, speak into the mic. Thank you.
I'm Karen Tendell. I was Amherst High alum or graduated in twenty nineteen, and I now attend UMass Amherst. As my mom said, I was a student speaker at the inauguration. Now, I don't really know all the nuances or specifics, but I've heard that some programs are getting cut, such as the R J program and the languages. And for me, that kind of resonates because I was in the R J program, and I've taken Spanish since middle school. And I currently now at twenty-three have my functional battery C C on Spanish, and I use it a lot. I use it at work. I use it with my friends who are native speakers, and I'm able to really connect with people on a cultural level. And in addition, I had an I P all of middle school and high school, and then transitioning to college, it switched to a five oh four. But basically, long story short, the resources and the opportunities that Amherst had with me as a struggling student enabled me to kind of really, and laid a foundation for me to thrive in college. I was able to make the dean's list and the president's list. So in short, I hope you're able to really reconsider and hopefully reinstate some of the cuts you made, such as the F F Y twenty, twenty twenty-four and the F Y twenty twenty-five. F Y twenty twenty-four, two hundred K from the elementary school level service budget. F Y twenty twenty-five for the regional level services budget. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for joining us. Thank. Next speaker, please.
Allegra Clark.
Hi, my name's Allegra Clark. I am a two thousand and three graduate of Amherst Regional High School. I have a second grader at Wildwood, and I have a preschooler. And I am imploring you all to allocate any of the remaining surplus funds to the schools so that my kids have the same opportunity that I did when I was in school. so that my kids have the same opportunity that I did when I was in school. Um, I am also here to read a statement from the Community Safety and Social Justice Committee. Um, so we are asking that you utilize the remaining $454,000 from the original $500,000 ARPA earmark for youth empowerment. On youth empowerment rather than any transfers to cash reserves, we understand there are budget challenges and we need to prioritize essential services, cost-saving measures, and capital projects. But the committee states that utilizing the funds for an intended earmark is most appropriate. The recommendation to establish a youth empowerment center came out of the work of the Community Safety Working Group, which was established by the town council and its commitment to better understand and support the needs of Amherst BIPOC youth. And this would demonstrate that ongoing commitment. Youth, mental health, and social well-being have suffered as a direct result of the COVID pandemic. This is especially true of our youth with marginalized identities. Disruptions to learning, isolation from peers, and concerns for physical health and safety have had a lasting impact on youth. Therefore, providing youth with a safe space to engage in beneficial and productive activities that mitigate many of these negative impacts of COVID would be appropriate use of ARPA funds as they are meant to serve the communities most impacted by COVID. There's growing concern among different communities that the town is not committed to youth, including their schools and by extension, the BIPOC community. Honoring the allocation of ARPA funds shows that youth and the town as a whole, that there is a commitment to young people and youth empowerment. The remaining ARPA funds could be utilized to support youth empowerment in the following ways. Supporting additional staffing to incorporate youth and enhance programming, contract with BIPOC groups to provide youth-specific
We need you to wrap up.
programming. Offer youth opportunities to engage in enrichment programs and cultural activities, providing rent and hiring a grant writer to find future activities so it doesn't all fall back on the town's operating budget. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us, Allegra.
Remy Fernandez O'Brien.
Hello. My name is Remy Fernandez O'Brien. I teach dance at Amherst Regional High School. I used to teach dance at Amherst Regional Middle School, but that program was cut this year. Every time I go back to that building, I have a few students who say, hey, when are you coming back? I really miss you. Or I have a staff person who says, I have this perfect kid who can't sit still, who needs to be in your dance class. And I have to tell them that's not going to happen because we don't have money for it. So I'm here to ask you to consider allocating part of the surplus funds to the schools. And in particular, my worry is for the students who are at the margins, the ones who really need the most support and who I see every day. Um, we cut the restorative justice program and some of my students who faced the most challenges at school lost their biggest advocate, their biggest role model, the person who makes it possible for them to navigate the building throughout the day. Um, we made major cuts to special education and students are going without paras every day. We're seeing them in our classrooms without the one-on-one support that they need. Um, and today, a couple hours ago, a student blockaded my classroom. A student who should have had a one, uh, one-on-one para. And we were unable to leave the classroom for several minutes because of the outbursts from the student. Last semester, I had a, uh, student who was repeatedly, over the course of several weeks, hitting another student in that class. And we did what we could to support that student. But again, there wasn't enough adult support in the room because of the lack of funding. And this student just kept getting hit. That's where we landed. We are not doing more with less right now in the schools. We are doing less for our kids and it's, it's breaking my heart.
Thank you.
Mildred Martinez.
I'm Mildred Martinez. I am the administrator slash registrar over at the middle school. I work at the family center and, um, I'm here to read a statement also. I'm writing to strongly encourage you to allocate some of the town's $5.7 million surplus toward the improvement and support of our public schools. As our community grows, so do the needs of our students and educators. Their surplus presents a unique opportunity to directly address those needs and create a positive lasting impact. Investing in education should be one of our top priorities as it benefits everyone in Amherst, both now and in the future. By directing a portion of the surplus to our schools, we can enhance programs, improve facilities, and ensure that our students have the resources they need to succeed. I hope you will consider this important investment in our community's future. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us.
Laura Yvonne Steinman.
Hi, I'm Lori Yvonne Steinman and I'm the art teacher at Wildwood Elementary School. I'm asking for you to invest in our future by being positive role models for our children and youth. And to do that costs money. I'm not an expert in math and I know that with $5.7 million as a surplus in funds, that this can and should be allotted to create the communities we all dream of into a reality. This is not a reach in Amherst. This can be a reality. And I'm asking for each of you to do this, to do what needs to be done to make this a reality for our future generations. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us.
Deb Leonard.
Good evening. Um, my name is Deb Leonard. I'm resident of District Five. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and myself only. Like to take this opportunity this evening to, um, underscore or refresh the chair's memory of the, um, the surpluses that were over the last three years instead of simply the last one. Other people spoke to that, but I did want to point out that, um, uh, at the four towns meeting, I either misunderstood or misheard that the surpluses were limited just to this past fiscal year. Um, $16 million over the past three, 16.5. And then of those, um, 8.10 million were from, um, underestimating revenues and, and not just from the expense side of the budget. So I just wanted to, to point those, those points out. And then remind the entire council that, as we all know, budgets are your values. And saying, um, excuse me, that you value robust schools is, is, is a statement, but the budget and the budget guidelines are really what reflect the values of this town. Um, I've heard discussions about structural issues and I, I recognize that there's a state structural issue. There's a structural issue related to the assessment. But part of the structural problem is the inequity in how the regional budget and the school budget's timeline and needs are represented in the budget. In particular, the regional school system's retirement line are outs, are inside the operating budget. Whereas for the elementary school and the municipal side, that's within the operating budget. So when those retirement lines go up by large percentages, that's supposed to stay within the three to 4% of the operating budget of the region. And that's just not sustainable. Um, so putting the region and the elementary schools in a box that's 3% to 4% over the next six years, that's six years through 2029, regardless of what the actual increases in the expenses are, is just unrealistic. And, um, that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time and your service.
Thank you.
Luke Rotello.
Hello. My name is Luke Rotello. I live in Northampton and I'm a co-chair of the Western Musk Club of the Communist Party USA. I'm here not only as a working class organizer, fighting to defend public education in this time of existential crisis, but also as a 19-year resident and a proud graduate of Amherst Public Schools. The current condition of the Amherst City budget is reflective of a concerning development of priorities at the local level across the valley. In Northampton, we've seen dozens of educators fired over the past two years, including at least 20 this year as a result of Mayor Gina Luis Chiara's most recent budget proposal. Through Northampton Support Our Schools, we are actively fighting for an alternative through a mid-year appropriation and in the 2025 municipal elections. Our, uh, our starting point is seeking to properly apply the excess free cash that's set aside every year, just as it is in Amherst. But as it stands, our city council majority and mayoral administration have prioritized building a city for tourists and technocrats in which the very residents to whom they are accountable are not considered necessary contributors to political process. The issue at hand, shared not only between Amherst and Northampton, but across our country, is one of democracy and justice for working people. This palpable disdain for the needs of Amherst teachers, paraeducators, students, and parents does not suit those who claim to sit in opposition to Donald Trump and the MAGA movement. The only consistent opposition to the extreme right comes from those who fight for public education and social equity, not only in abstract, but indeed. Together, we have the power to demand more from our cities and state and to resist the attacks on our public schools from the incoming, incoming presidential administration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That's the last person who signed up.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. The following items were selected because they were considered to be routine and it was reasonable to expect they would pass with no controversy. To remove an item from the consent agenda for discussion later in the meeting, please ask that it be removed after I've read the motion once. This is a motion that requires a second and seven votes to pass. To move the following items and the printed motions therunder and approve those items as a single unit. 6A, adoption of proclamation recognizing Kwanzaa Week 2024. 8F, authorization of president to sign a letter in support of construction of a train station in Palmer, Mass. 8G, authorization of president to sign a letter in regarding, regarding the Chapter 70 charter school formula. That's, okay. 9A, one to, one to four, approval of town manager appointments, board of assessors. Iliana Carrion for a term to expire June 30th, 2028. Community Development Block Grant Committee, Andrew Hart for a term to expire June 30th, 2027. Olivia Keller for a term to expire June 30th, 2026. Council on Aging, Yvette Pelacine, Pelacine for a term to expire June 30th, 2027. Public Art Commission, Charlene Chow for a term to expire June 30th, 2027. Lynn Thompson for a term to expire June 30th, 2026. Approval of minutes, 11, approval of minutes, November 18th, 2024, public forum on the budget. November 18th, 2024, public forum on appropriations outside the budget. November 18th, 2024, regular meeting. Are there any items that people would like removed? Seeing none, I seek a second.
Second, DeAngelis.
Thank you. Uh, we will move to a vote. Uh, we'll begin with Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Gothier is absent. Counselor Ette.
Aye.
Lynn Greasmerzen, aye. Counselor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Counselor Lord.
Aye.
Pam Rooney.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Rain, Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Yes.
Jennifer Taub.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yeah.
It's unanimous, unanimous with one absent. Counselor Walker, as one of the sponsors of the proclamation for Kwanzaa Week, would you please read the last paragraph?
Um, yes, thank you. Uh, now therefore, we, the town, the Amherst Town Council do hereby proclaim December 26th, 2024 through January 1st, 2025, as Kwanzaa Week in the town of Amherst and invite all residents to join in celebrating and learning of this special time of joy and reflection in our community through a Kwanzaa event organized by Sankofa Gumbo on December 29th, 2024, at 4:00 PM at New Africa House, as well as the reading of this proclamation on December 26th, 2024, at 5:00 PM on the steps of the town hall.
Thank you. Uh, we are going to take up item seven after we finish the action items. So we're going to go to the action items. The first one is the proposed University Drive and Amity Street Roundabout. I'm going to begin with a motion and seek a second and then call on the Chair of TSO uh, to recommend that the town council approve the proposed changes to the intersection of Amity Street and University Drive to convert the existing intersection from signaled control to a full-sized roundabout as shown on the pavement marking and sign planned, plant, signing plans, drawing number CT-101 dated April 15, 2024, and as modified by additional adjustments to be made by the DPW superintendent to align with changes requested by the Transportation Advisory Committee and Disability Access Advisory Committee. Is there a second?
Ryan, second.
Thank you. Uh, with that, I'm going to ask Andy Steinberg, as Chair of TSO, to speak to the motion.
TSO, uh, spent considerable time during, uh, meeting in October, I think it was October that, and, uh, we have summarized that in quite detail in a report that was submitted at the time and is repeated in today's, uh, packet. And, um, we concluded was that, um, it was a, uh, supported and well thought out proposal funded with the grant. Um, and, uh, it had strong support from UMass as well as, uh, from within-town, uh, Public Works and from town manager. Um, the committees that we consulted were the Transportation Advisory Committee and the Disability Access Advisory Committee. And both of those committees were very concerned to make sure that, uh, there was, uh, accommodation that was appropriate for both pedestrians and for bicycles. And, uh, the, uh, as a result of those discussions, there were modifications made to the plans, uh, particularly having to do with pedestrians, which is a particular concern of the disability community as represented by DAAC. Uh, so based upon all of that information and, uh, the discussion that we had with Superintendent Public Works regarding, um, how those, um, concerns have been addressed and will be implemented, um, we were comfortable in making the recommendation.
Are there any questions from the council? Kathy Shane.
Yes, and I have to say, I don't serve on TSO, so I wasn't able, and I haven't been able to participate. My first question, I, well, people will probably find odd because I know we have received state money. I'm not sure why this is needed. Um, I often go through this intersection. It doesn't get backed up and the traffic light works fairly well. So that's just a general comment. I don't know why this investment is needed. I know it's been planned. Um, Andy, you said there's been accommodations for walkers and bikes. Right now, you can push a button and stop the cars. And if I ride my bike along there, there is an extra wide, uh, uh, lane, a sidewalk, a real, not just a multi-use, but a real bike lane that people travel all the way down to the south, across the intersection, and then connect with the bike trail that is, uh, by Snell Street. And people walk back and forth. And there's a lot of walking that goes on during football games and other games because people park somewhere so they can then get to the stadium. So can you, in the new design, press a button and stop the traffic? Um, because that's going to be fairly essential in busy times for either bikers or walkers. And we're talking about potentially more apartments along that area where we would hope that people would walk to campus or bike to campus, not car to campus. So part of the idea of a roundabout is cars can keep going. And the students, if you watch them, don't always yield. Uh, they keep going. And fortunately, a lot of our roundabouts don't have a lot of foot traffic or a lot of bike traffic, so they've worked fairly well. So I want to know what provision there is that if I'm riding my bike or a group of us are riding our bike or walking, can we stop the cars?
Andy?
Um, I may, um, ask Superintendent Public Works to supplement the answer, but basically the, um, commitment that has been made by the the, um, commitment that has been made by the department is to include, as requested by, um, the Transportation Advisory Committee and consistent with, um, standards for roundabouts, um, what are called, uh, referred to as RRFBs, which are, um, repeating flashing beacons that can control the, um, intersection. One of the additional things, and that includes, um, the, um, bicycle crossing can use the RRFBs. Bicycles actually have the right to use the roadway or the parallel path, and, uh, we discussed and, uh, the, and made sure that there was accommodations for both. And, uh, so I think that that is, uh, or the other thing that I wanted to mention is, uh, as far as pedestrians are concerned, um, there was a request from the Disability Access Advisory Committee for, um, some way that, uh, if somebody is visually impaired, that they're able to know which street is attached, uh, which crossing is attached to a, um, particular RFB request, and, uh, that there is technology available and that will be included to, uh, implement that. And, uh, so, um, I don't know.
Superintendent Orrin, did you have something you wanted to add?
Just that roundabouts have shown the slow tra, roundabouts have shown the slow traffic down. So in the operating system we have now, when the light's green, if someone steps off the curb and it's, the cars have the right of way at that point, they're hitting at a little higher, uh, speed. The goal of the roundabout is to slow cars down, get people to see what's going on, and make the crossing safer. For bicyclists, you can ride in the road, and if you want to, you can ride through the roundabout because the speed of the traffic has slowed down to such, you can enter and keep riding if you need to. If you're not a, if you're not a strong, that's the word they use, strong bicycle rider, you can exit the bike lane and enter onto the multi-use path and cross at the crosswalk. The crosswalks will have the RRFBs. Uh, RRFBs do not stop the traffic, but they flash and give a warning to the drivers that are going slower, that they should stop, and the rule is to yield. Um, this, this will be a much more safer and a much more usable, um, intersection. We've actually been looking at changing this intersection and actually this whole corridor since about 2003 is when the town first started looking into it. Um, so this is kind of accumulation of all that work. The big Y intersection change was part of that work initially, and then when we were doing that, we were actually proposing a roundabout Amity Street at that time, too. Um, so the goal is to slow traffic down, give people more time to see what's going on, and pedestrians will have that ability to push a button, get a flashing light, and cross when traffic's safe.
Thank you. Kathy, did you follow any questions?
Yes, I, I think I heard that I can't, that you won't be able to stop the traffic, you just hope they see the light. I just want to say, this is, for those who don't know this intersection and these sidewalks, this is one of the few places in town, there's a general, a genuine off-the-road place to ride your bike, and you have to cross the intersection at one point, but it's super wide and there's a bike lane. So I, I wouldn't want to lose that, students do use it. They go back and forth from that big apartment building that was built, um, over by what used to be the gym and now is a beer hall. So Guilford, I know you think roundabout slows traffic down, but so do red lights, um, if you need to cross the road.
Red lights only slow traffic down when the light's red and someone will, wants to stop. So the argument can be made both ways. Uh, the multi-use path that you're talking about will stay there, that wide path, it'll stay there on the east side of university. It'll stay the whole length of university that the town is responsible for and the whole length that this university is responsible for that, so that path does stay in its entirety.
Are there any other council questions? Seeing none, the motion's been made and seconded, we're going to move to a vote. We'll begin, I'm, I'm sorry, before I do that, Anna Devlin-Gothier has joined us, she joined us at 7:22. Anna, can you hear us?
I can, thank you. I'm going to abstain from this vote, though, since I missed the absolute majority of the discussion.
Thank you. All right, we're going to begin with the roll call vote with Anna.
I abstain.
Uh, Counselor Ette?
Aye.
Lynn Griesmerz, aye. Counselor Hanke?
Aye.
Bob Hegner?
Aye.
Counselor Lord?
Aye.
Pam Rooney?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shane?
No.
Andy Steinberg?
Yes.
Jennifer Taub?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis?
Aye.
Um, did I get everybody? Yes. Okay. Uh, 11 in favor, one opposed, and one abstention. Uh, we're going to move to the next item, which is, um, proposed request to Town Manager for financial order for roads and sidewalk repairs. I'm going to read the motion, I'm going to seek a second, and then I'm going to turn over to, uh, Counselor, um, uh, Ryan, who has provided us with a memo. To request the Town Manager to submit an appropriation request for a portion of the Amherst Capital Program, program road repairs and sidewalk repairs in the amount of $500,000. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made, and second, Counselor Ryan.
So I have, uh, put a memo in the packet, which I assume you all read, but for the sake of those in the audience who probably have not read it, and just for the sake of the record, um, what I am asking us to do is first of all, to remember that we have made it a priority for the Town Manager to address the enormous backlog of road and sidewalk repairs. Last year, a million dollars in town funds were allocated by the Town Manager to augment Chapter 90 funds in response to repeated council and resident requests for action in this area. In this year's capital budget, the town contribution was reduced, uh, by 500,000. Um, at the December 2nd meeting, as we all know, the Town Manager's financial order to put a million into the roads and sidewalks was defeated by a 6, 6, 1 vote. For many of us on the council, at least this is my experience, the most frequent complaint we hear from our constituents involves the condition of our roads and sidewalks. This involves people in many different ways. Uh, one of the ways that I've become aware of it is in terms of safe routes to schools. Um, in the past year, um, in, in this last year, in my experience, the most frequent compliments I've gotten, uh, and positive statements involve, uh, work that we have done, uh, on our roads and sidewalks, and I gave some examples in the memo. Farmington Road was a road in my district, uh, the sidewalk that links Crocker Farm with the Pomeroy Center, and of course, the Pomeroy Roundabout, which of course was funded from a different source, but the point is, these kinds of visible and obvious changes to the landscape, uh, for people who walk and cycle and drive on our roads every single day is something that our constituents notice and they value and they appreciate. So I'm asking the council to request that the Town Manager allocate 500,000 for sidewalk and road repair for the coming fiscal year. Um, this would make up for the, uh, in part, uh, for the million, it would make up the 500,000 that was taken out of the capital budget, um, and so that's my basic rationale, that at least this year, we would continue to, um, fund this at the level that we funded it last year, and hopefully again, uh, make some headway in addressing this longstanding problem that we have with our roads and sidewalks.
Are there council questions? Counselor Hanke?
Two questions. Do we know how much money the elementary schools spent in repairing the failed fire alarm system? Um, that's question number one. Question number two is, why now? Why not wait and ask the manager to add 500,000 or a million dollars into the capital improvement plan for the FY26 budget so that it can go through the entire JCPC process?
Do you want?
Sure. So I think, um, the, um, the, the repairs to the Crocker Farm, um, fire alarm system was about $80,000, and that came out of the capital account for the schools. I can get the exact number for you, I have that information.
Thank you.
Okay. Jennifer Taub?
I support, uh, appropriating the 500,000 dollars to roads and sidewalks. When the million, when the vote for the full million dollars came before the council, um, I supported, you know, a portion, major portion going to roads and sidewalks, but also wanted to receive, um, capital requests from the schools for the other portion, the, the other half of the million dollars, and I'm wondering, um, will that remaining half a million kind of stay out there for a request to come in from the schools? And how, what is, how does that happen?
Town Manager Bachman, please.
So we're, every department has the ability to request that I bring an appropriation request to the council. Um, and so we, I've had conversations with this, with the superintendent concerning the elementary schools, um, and the, and the potential needs that they have. Um, but so far, we have not come to anything, but this doesn't, it's not, it's, um, you know, anytime that there's a need, and I tend, try to drive as much as we can through the normal budget process, um, but, um, so I don't have any other requests to present to you tonight.
My question is, can that, the other 500,000 dollars remain, sit there for a request to come in?
It, Paul, the question is, the money that we are not, when we did not approve the million dollars, the money would, was then placed where?
It, it didn't move. It stayed where it was in free cash.
And therefore, it would be available for future use?
Yes, yeah.
Thank you. That, does that answer your question, Jennifer?
Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy? I'm sorry, I'm, I'm trying to, Pam Rooney? You're next.
Thank you. Um, I actually had a similar question, that is, is this part or in addition to what shows up in the capital improvement plan? I'm looking at Counselor Ryan to ask if that's what he intended to be, in addition to something that's already being accounted for in capital improvement plan.
Counselor Ryan?
Repeat your question, I'm trying to, uh, understand what you're asking.
We have money in the capital improvement plan for roads and sidewalks. Are you asking for this to be in addition to whatever is targeted in the capital improvement plan?
My understanding, and you can correct me because I'm not on JCPC, but my understanding is that, uh, Paul took out 500,000 this year in the capital budget for roads and sidewalks. And so the, the allotment is for 500,000 currently. Is that correct? Am I correct about that? And so what I'm suggesting is that, the reason I chose 500,000 is that, um, that would make up for what I see. I mean, in the past year, it had been a million, this year it's 500,000. Um, I was hoping it was going to be a million, but Paul explained why, he felt that that was the best that could be done. Um, and so I'm asking us to bring us back to that 1 million. Um, still not anywhere near what we need, but we have obviously other demands and pressures. So I don't know if that answers your question, but, uh, essentially, I see the request for 500,000 as an attempt to get us back to that million figure, and I'd like to think in future years, at the very least, that we, we would continue to do that to address the backlog. Is that?
Did that answer your question?
Thank you.
Okay. Kathy Shane?
I, George, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think your intent is you mean this fiscal year, not next fiscal year. So the year we're in, FY25. Um, and just so you know, there was another 190,000 for sidewalks, and we went up on that from 50 to 190, which was a big jump to allow something dedicated to sidewalks. So in addition to the Chapter 90, there is, by, 690. Um, and if you look at the capital plan, it's going to drop back down to 500 every year. Um, so that is the result of these big buildings coming online. You know, it wasn't that the Town Manager cut something, it was that, uh, we needed equipment in the Police and Fire Department, we needed X, Y, and Z, so the competition for, we didn't have a request for a million, we didn't actually cut it. So it's just the way it's worded looks like it's for the next fiscal year. So what I'm, I think you're asking for is out of the surplus funds, that we get another appropriation out of the current surplus funds, because what we've done so far in the finance in the guidelines is take the whole million and put it toward the coming year to enhance, so be on the 10.1, but you wanted it in this fiscal year, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. George, you have your hand up?
I think the, uh, sorry, uh, the question is, why now? And, um, I think the answer is that this is something that we have recognized for some time as a ongoing and persistent issue that we need to address. And, uh, I think also, DPW, the sooner they know what funds they have, the better chance they have of actually addressing some of the problems. Ultimately, um, this issue is something that we can only resolve through allocating money, and, uh, so the reason I think it now is the best time is because, um, the problem is now, and, uh, this would also help DPW in planning for the coming year.
Jennifer?
I'm sorry, I'm going back to my previous question because I'm still a little unclear. When Counselor Hanke, I think you, um, it, I don't know if you made a, was your motion? I think when we?
Can you speak in the mic? I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. I think it was your motion when we voted not to appropriate the full 1 million dollars to roads and sidewalks so that we could address some of the needs of the school. So for that 500,000 dollars that is not going to roads and sidewalks, would we have to vote to kind of save that for a request to come for the schools? Because that's how we got to the vote, not to appropriate the full 1 million dollars to roads and sidewalks. I think it was two meetings ago?
Counselor Hanke, you have your hand up.
So I never made any motions, just to be clear. Um, and there was no motions. I objected to the spending of a million dollars outside of the JCPC process when I had heard of so many needs, particularly school committee members themselves, but also of the community, saying maybe we should be considering some of this money for the schools, whether it be capital or not. I, I have, and so I was unwilling at that time and stated my unwillingness to say, let's put it all at the time and spend it all, because I thought we should have time to wait and see if the region might vote another dead authorization out of cycle for something that they might want to do that we could use this potential money for, or I was looking for answers, I had heard that, that the fire system had been paid for out of operating, not leftover capital, and so I wanted answers on that. Um, I was looking for time, but I did not make any motion.
It might have been, um, Anna spoke strongly.
Yeah.
Needs of the school.
There were very, various people who spoke, but there was actually no motion placed on the table.
But we could come back, like as Counselor Ryan came back to the request?
If the school made a request, more than likely at this point, after this, the school would make a request and it would go through the normal JCPC process, and/or it would be submitted as part of the regional school budget.
That the other 500,000 dollars then will not be sitting there waiting for a request?
It'll be sitting there. Yes, a request that comes through the normal process. Counselor Ette? Andy, I'm sorry, I may have skipped over you. Go, go ahead.
Everyone uses roads and sidewalks in Amherst, and I think the last opportunity we had, the vote failed, and I am hoping that this passes and it isn't contingent on whatever happens to the remainder of the 1 million that isn't in discussion tonight. Roads and sidewalks are important for seniors, they're important for minors, they, when you have potholes, that can become dangerous to those who might be crossing the streets. I've seen too many examples on my side of the street and on other parts of the town, and I think I would have preferred a larger amount, but I think this is a good enough amount that we should be able to vote for it without hesitation.
Um, I'm sorry, Andy Steinberg? I'm sorry, Andy Steinberg?
Yes, many of the speakers have now said things that I want to say, including Counselor Ette's comments of just previous. But the why now, I wanted to come back and really drill in on that because the DPW issues in annual requests for bids for doing roadwork. And anything that gets delayed and is not available before the season starts, when they're having to put the bids out, the summer construction season, is not possible. So if we make this allocation tonight, it's available for this next round of roadwork. We know that the amount of work is going to always exceed what we have available. But the less we do, the farther we get behind and the more we hear the complaints from our constituents and the greater the concern across the community about the, the road conditions. And my last comment is that at that last meeting, there was one of the points that was made, and it was true, was that we had very impassioned statements, as we did tonight, regarding school funding. And I certainly listened to them and understand and would want to make sure that we're being fair in doing what we reasonably can do. But that's true for roads, too. And the comments that we've received about roads have really come in since that meeting because people were not happy with the decision we made. And I think that those comments, most of which we've received in writing, speak for themselves. So thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Pam Rooney?
I just want to comment on that last statement that, in fact, a number of people that contacted me with concern that, that somehow I hadn't supported the million dollars of roadwork, with the caveat, they, they said, but we understand that it was really more a discussion of should something go to the schools? And that that was the basis for the conversation, not that I didn't want a million dollars going toward the, the roadwork. That they, that they recognized that we were in fact having to make a choice or perhaps look for other ways to allocate that money before we made a decision that we could hold off until we had time to think it through.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? The motion's been made and seconded. We'll meet, we're going to go to a vote. Counselor Ette?
Aye.
Lynn Griesmer's an aye. Counselor Hanke?
Aye.
Bob Hegner?
Aye.
Counselor Lord?
Aye.
Pam Rooney?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Andy Steinberg?
Yes.
Jennifer Taub?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis?
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Gotham?
Aye.
It's unanimous. We're going to go on to the financial guidelines. I'm hesitant because I'm wondering if we should take a break now and then come back. But no, let's go to the financial guidelines. So the motion is to adopt the FY '26 budget guidelines as presented slash amended. And so we'll see where we go. I'm going to make that motion, seek a second, and then we'll move into discussion. And I looked to Bob Hegner for guidance with regard to how things have changed since we last discussed this. So the, to adopt the FY '26 budget guidelines as presented slash amended. Is there a second?
I'll second Hegner.
Thank you. Bob?
We didn't have a lot of changes. I think there was some reorganization. And we did remove one of the budget guidelines regarding, Counselor Hanke, what was that we removed? I can't remember. It was one bullet that?
We cleared up some bullets regarding the budget surpluses.
Right, but we also removed, I can't remember now.
I think there was something in expense projections, maybe? I'm not sure. I know we removed something in budget surpluses as well as cleared some stuff up.
Right, yes. It's, I can't remember it, but it was, it was something that was not, we didn't think it would, needed to be in the budget guidelines. The, to overcome some of the comments on the executive summary, we changed Roman numeral one to just be a summary of our budget recommendations. So it's not really an executive summary. And we tried to provide the recommendations in bullet form and then explain them and provide more guidance or more meat around them, each one of them, as we move forward. The, an issue that we need to discuss, that's the, the committee needs to, the council needs to discuss, is, I think it's, just let me find it. Sorry. We went through so many iterations of this. Yeah, so it's on page five, under capital budget, Roman numeral five. And it, it, it has to do with the, the elementary school project and whether or not there is going to be any money left over from the budget that we originally had. Kathy has suggested that we just strike the paragraph that says, starts with bids, right? Just a second sentence in that. You will need to facilitate a council conversation. If construction costs are lower than appropriation in borrowing order, FY '23-06C permitted. So it, it really comes down to, do we actually have a surplus? No, we don't have a surplus. Will there be an actual surplus? No, this is money we don't have to borrow. So it really is more of a, we don't really have to deal with it now in FY '26 anyway. So maybe we should just strike this and leave it till next year or the year after, when it's, when we actually have to make a decision on this. And other that, other than that, I think we, we probably just reworded and clarified. I don't think we changed very much since the draft that you have seen. Does anyone from the committee want to comment or add anything to that?
Kathy, you have your hand up. You're from the committee.
I do. I'm from the committee, but I wasn't at the committee meeting. I've been off in the wilderness. But I just want to speak to why I think that sentence should be removed. On the building committee side, we've got contingency money. And once this is finally contracted, we may need to use some of that. We don't know. So we don't know exactly what the final, final will be. A year from now, we'll have a better idea. But basically, we wouldn't borrow the money if we didn't need it. And what this will mean is taxpayers will have a lower tax increase. So it's not there for the council just to decide to spend unless it's part of the larger project. And there have been small pieces. So I'll give you one example. If you drive by Fort River now, there's a temporary rented light blinking by the car entrance. We could dip into contingency because that's part of the construction project and making it safer. So we did use that. So I think right now, it's, the intention would be never to borrow money that we didn't need. And that would just mean less of debt service. So that's why I think this sentence should be removed. We'll know more. I mean, we're still waiting for the final signing of the contract, what the final bid will be. But we don't know for sure what the final cost will be. I mean, this, this bid now has been, it is going to construction several months later than we had originally planned on it going. So that's why I just think this, this is inappropriate because it really isn't something for a conversation. It's good news for the taxpayers and we should leave it as good news.
Is there any objection to removing that sentence?
I have no objection.
Okay. We're going to collect a few of these and then we'll move to the amended. I'm, since I have my hand up and it relates to this paragraph, okay? I, the sentence above that should really be up to date. Bids for the project came in below budget, although issuance of a final contract was delayed because of an unsuccessful challenge from actually two of the bidders, or one, I think it was two, right, Paul? I just want to make it accurate.
Would you like me to make these changes as you go?
Please.
And just listen for objections from counselors? Is that okay, rather than doing amendments?
I would prefer that if, unless people want to.
So Lynn, are you changing your challenges from two, from the bidders, right?
So their sentence would now read, bids for the project came in below budget, although issuance of a final contract was delayed because of an unsuccessful challenge from two of the bidders. Just make it more accurate, that's all. And then we've eliminated the, the last sentence.
Got it.
I have my hand up, but I'll wait for others. Pam Rooney?
Yeah, I think George Ryan is ahead of me, but I'll go.
I can't decide. Which one am I looking at? Go ahead, Pam.
On the very front page, on the summary of budget recommendations, it says revenue projections. We have had a number of conversations, including tonight, about how to use monies that are, that appear to be, the term has been used surplus. So on the revenue projections bullet, there is a note saying, adjust revenue projections as more information becomes available with a focus on areas where forecasts have proven to be conservative. And I would like to add prior to the May 1 budget presentation because I think it's important that that, that that adjustment be very, very clear before we get the budget.
Yes, Counselor Hanke?
I guess I'm unclear what you mean by prior to the way May 1 budget presentation because if you go in, this is the summary, right? So, so the guideline itself talks about certain areas have been conservative and all, and so we expect you to adjust, you know, the summary, the summary part is adjust them. Are you asking for like continually updating those adjustments and presenting them to the council as updated by what you're trying to add here? Or just at the May 1 budget, them be updated? I guess I don't understand what that addition is for.
That they are updated on, actually on an ongoing basis, but clearly at first quarter, second quarter, third quarter so that the preparation of the budget numbers themselves reflect as accurately as possible what, what expenses and, and revenues are going to be coming in at. So we don't end up with these big numbers at the end of the year.
But it's, let me just clear. When the, when the town manager presents his budget, he has a bottom line, okay? If we anticipate or find out there might be additional revenues after the budget has been presented on May 1, that becomes a bit confusing. So it's kind of like, May 1 is the cutoff? Is that what we're saying for when we project?
It's always the cutoff because that's the day the manager presents the budget. That's why I don't quite understand this clause.
Is that what you were saying, though?
That any, any, Kathy's looking at me. Kathy has? I just want to say that first quarter and second quarter, so it's July, August, September, October, November, December. By February, we should have second quarter.
Right.
So we're halfway through a year, which will give us a much better handle. So I think that what we're saying is by then, we're going to know whether we're way too low. There are a couple revenue projections that have been too low and we can really look at halfway through a year. So the intent was before the budget, but this is vague, is Pam is just pointing out, this isn't like, when would we do it? Because everyone's going to need that information. And we really haven't had that as quickly. I mean, we're, we're not going to get first quarter, I think, even till January, which is later than we've had it in earlier years. And I understand why.
I, I just assumed that the reason you wanted that in there is because it clarifies the point at which we now have a budget number we're working with. That's, that's all. It's a clarification. It says, here's the cutoff point.
I just don't understand how that's a clarification when the budget gets presented May 1. So any numbers are final on May 1. So if you want it earlier, I think the expense projection lines are trying to get towards that more because that's where we talk about if there's excess revenue, you distribute it or you consult the finance committee if it goes above a certain point. So if you're trying to get to, well, if the revenues get adjusted so that there's more money, we need to know that earlier, I think the expense side bullet point gets to that and deals with that issue. But a prior to May 1 budget presentation is actually fairly vague. When, if you're trying to get a specific date, as, as I think the regional committee was trying to get on the weekend, they wanted to know, when are they going to get new numbers? And the answer was kind of January and then probably not much until May.
Right. So the, the suggestion is to add the phrase, prior to the May 1 budget presentation so that it would be adjust revenue projections as more information become available with a focus on areas where forecasts have proven to be conservative prior to the May 1 budget presentation. To me, it's just a, it says by then, we're done. We're, we're done with the projections.
But I do have a question, though.
Yeah.
In that it's, it's prior to the Senate Ways and Means budget, prior to the Senate budget, prior to the conference process and prior to the governor's actions and any legislative action that follows, any line items he does that the governor may make. And we, if we think we're getting to a specific date, we're not. And the question that we as a council and the, and town manager, working with us as partners, have to grapple with is that changes can happen to state aid, which is the second largest portion of our budget. And we need to be able to understand how we do that. So I'm not sure that implying that there's a freeze-in date is really.
I remove my suggestion.
Okay. All right. We're taking that suggestion out. Andy, all of what you just said is also true. Are there, Pam, did you have other comments? Okay. I have, I have two that I'd like to make. One is, I'm a little concerned that we're saying 3% to 4% when 4%, it basically, it means everybody's going to submit 4%. If we really only say, as Andy Poehler has told us on many occasions, we're really a 3.5, why are we asking people to submit 4% budgets in projection when we're really a 3.5? So I, I personally would prefer that that's a 3% to 3.5%.
Can you point out a page in a paragraph?
It, it's on page one. It's under general budget guidelines of third bullet. And then it's later on, on page three. It's where we ask for the FY '26 to '29 projections. It's the second full paragraph on page three.
So you want that?
I'd like.
4%, the the 3 to 4 change to 3.
3 to 3.5.
3.5.
Yeah, that's that would be my suggestion because it's more realistic. I've in in our years on the council, I can only remember one year we went above 3.5 and it was last year. So is is there a problem, a suggestion, a concern? Okay. And then the other point.
Hold on, hold on Lynn, we're on this page.
Okay, so.
I got I got page one.
And then on page three, it's the second full paragraph at the end of the second line.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. And then my other point is that it does seem to me that on page four, under the bullets that are below, when we say refer back to the finance committee, it does seem to me that BCG should be included. I'm sorry, I didn't speak to the mic. I believe that under that second bullet on page four, when it says second distribution, distribute the funds appropriately for the four operating budgets unless the remaining funds to be distributed would result in more than an additional 0.5% year over year increase to each major functional area, at which point we recommend consulting, it says the finance committee, and I think it should say the budget coordinating committee. Budget coordinating group. Or maybe both. I don't care. I just think that if you're talking about all four areas, it's also BCG. Yeah, please.
So at least in discussion at finance committee, one of the reasons it said finance was last year, the increase was sort of just presented to BCG as happening. And finance committee wanted to make sure before there was sort of a presentation out to everyone that this is what we're doing, that there was a chance to discuss whether that is what the council might want to do with them or to have that discussion within the council first essentially before it was just sort of put out townwide that here's what's happening, particularly with the fact that there is a recommendation to reduce the OPEB funding from 650 to 600 because there's a possibility that finance or the council may say, well, let's put 50,000 in that. And what does that look like for the rest? Or things like that. So the council, the finance committee thought someone before BCG should have a chance to chat.
So as long as we say maybe at the end of the sentence, prior to consultation with BCG.
So you just add the phrase?
Just add the phrase after the words funds.
I believe that phrase would need added up at the top in the summary too, because I think the summary has the same bullet and the same wording.
And interesting, Councilor Hanke, that you mentioned the OPEB because that would be an area where I'm sorry, we're not going up to the 650 this year. So that's an example of where I could see us deciding to add money. Okay, were there any objections to that addition? Did we get it in all the places needed?
Yeah, it just needs to be in two places.
Yep, okay. Let's see Pam, I'm gonna go to Councilor Lord and then on and then back to Pam Rooney. Councilor Lord?
Thank you. I have a question.
Yeah.
Around what does budget guidelines mean? Are these recommendations or are they more rules? So going forward, like where it says the school would get the 3% change. If this guideline is voted on today, has that become more of a rule within flexibility? Or is it more of a recommendation where we still have so many unknowns in terms of the state budget? And I'm just this, you know, what what does guidelines mean in this vote, please?
Anybody want to take a stab at that? I'm more than glad to.
Sure. At least my understanding as a finance committee member is this is what you should do if you can. But that doesn't mean you can. Particularly with right, what was presented in November had a deficit of six figures, low six figures, but six figures. So the first thing the manager is going to be looking to do is get rid of that deficit. And if there's more money that would create a surplus, where should it be distributed? And these guidelines are do it this way. And if you do it this way, we're going to be happy. If you don't, if you do it another way, maybe your budget's not going to pass.
And we want to know why. If you don't do it, if you don't do it as we provided guidance, we want to know why. So it's it is guidance, but it's given with strong recommendation.
Feeling more ruly to me.
And we we do have the ability to reject a budget. Not that that's a good thing to do.
We do. We also have the ability to go back and revise the guidelines, which we've never done, but we have that ability. Does that help? Thank you for asking the question. I think it's an important one. Okay, George. Oh, Paul, you had your hand up.
Yeah. So just to also note that the town manager has responsibility and the authority to submit the budget that the town manager thinks is the most appropriate for the town. And this is, I think what this document does is an attempt to communicate early to the manager in the before we even start the budget process on what the goals and what the priorities are and what the standards and expectations are from the council, as you said, because you are the final arbiter of whether a budget is passed or not. So, you know, aligning the budget with these guidelines is pretty important. But it doesn't mean that manager has to comply with everything if there's circumstances change in the meantime.
Thank you. Good. Councilor Ryan?
So on page two, just for my clarity, this is the bullet item budget surplus is included in certified free cash. There are four subbullets there. And I just wanted to, I mean, I'm thinking what's just happened a few minutes ago with what we decided and voted. Does that fall within this this description? I think the first three subbullet items are pretty much boilerplate, pretty much standard. The term bulk, the bulk of surplus is, that's a lovely term of art. But and then but it's the last one allocate some funds to the next year's capital budget or for fiscal 26 needs not identified during the JCPC process or to accomplish policy goals. So it gives a kind of menu of options to the manager and it allows a certain degree of flexibility. And in the case of what we just did, this would fit those guidelines?
And may I piggyback on that question?
Go ahead.
In other words, we still might get a request for some allocation once free cash is certified. But otherwise, maybe not. Is that a correct interpretation of this?
So my hope is that we don't. But that's my personal hope. My hope is that the manager follows allocate to the next year's budget to keep it under the JCPC process. But with what George, what Councilor Ryan just asked, if there is a policy goal to repair roads and sidewalks as quickly as possible, then potentially the vote we just took, well, potentially a financial order of the sense of the vote we just took would comply under this one. I believe Andy can correct me. He added those two clauses that weren't there in the last draft. And the first one about not identified during the JC process, I think, was also part of the waste holler one where we voted mid-year to do something that we knew would need money. Obviously, that also fit into a policy goal. But so it was to try and leave a little bit of leeway. But personally, and I will say personally, I'd like to see us minimize these out of JCPC capital requests because I personally, I really think it's unfair to the departments.
George, did that get at what you wanted to?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to stay on this Kathy unless you had a comment. Go, please go ahead.
Same topic.
Please go ahead.
I think we also in, I'm okay with this wording and I think JCPC itself, we focus on the next year as opposed to the next five years. We have five years in the budget, but we only focus on one. And I think we should do, we meaning the JCPC group also, but the manager and staff, the second year should have very high priority projects in it. So we should already have, when we say we don't have a proposal from the schools. If we couldn't fit it in this year, we should have what's the highest priority for the schools' capital. And right away, we should be grabbing money if we have excess money toward that rather than wish lists. And we haven't always done that. So this past year, we had an expensive project come before us that hadn't even been on the list the year before, even though people knew about it. You know, so it's this, we don't want to turn those down, but we should in a way have what's the next most urgent thing that we couldn't afford right away. So Mandy's saying try to stay in that process, but just get it moving because we're taking on debt for some really big projects. If they're surplus funds, there may be a way not to take on debt for them. We've had to take on debt because we haven't enough cash. So just really thinking about capital planning as planning, not just one year worth. We've gotten much better. So everyone should know that the plan no longer has giant deficits in each of the years other than the first year. But that doesn't necessarily mean it's a clear FY 26, FY 27, FY 28 plan. So I think this wording gets this message. Let's let's just really get better at high priority urgent projects.
I personally liked the way you finally came up with this wording because I, the way it looked like it was going before, I felt like it encouraged departments who had money because they couldn't fill positions to find a way to spend the money because they were going to lose it. And that to me is bad practice. So I wanted to make sure we weren't encouraging that. When we look at how we ended up this year or any year with our free cash, it came from interest, it came from unfilled positions. And the big area that we find ourselves underestimating was unanticipated revenue. And it's the unanticipated revenue that we're trying to tighten up. So that I feel like this does this and I want to thank the committee for wrestling with that. Anna, you have your hand up.
Thank you. Thank you. Sorry. I what I'm trying to figure out is how this language helps us to not get into the same position that we've been in for this meeting and two meetings before that, where we accidentally aren't necessarily communicating to other departments as clearly that there is an apple they may want to take a bite out of. So how are we, if we're saying policy goals, I like the idea of, you know, JCPC cycles. But if we're saying policy goals, we're not necessarily communicating out the opportunity for those areas that are not underneath the town manager and therefore don't have policy goals set by the town council to seek that funding. So I'm just curious and I I'm I hesitated to raise my hand because it's one of those things where if you don't have a solution, don't don't come forward to the problem because I don't know what wording to add. But I'd love to know if finance committee talked about how to avoid that type of scenario in this wording and how to make sure that the schools and the library feel or are able to submit those requests if there should be a surplus again.
Or anybody else from finance want to address that?
Well, what what we've done in on page four and up in the summary, and the two bullets on page four is the first priority is the regional school budget. So if we do find ourselves in a surplus situation or in a situation where we are heading towards a surplus, the first priority then is to is to basically fund the the full ARPA funding that we had put in as a as a gift plus a 3% increase. Then secondly, we want to distribute monies proportionately to the four operational budgets. But we do want the town manager to come back to, we had this discussion earlier, come back to the finance committee if there's a whole lot of extra money so that we could we could bump up everybody by 1% rather than just do that, you know, because we might choose to reallocate that money differently. The council may choose to reallocate that differently. So we want to leave that flexibility in there.
Yeah.
Does that answer your question, Anna?
I think so, yes. I think it's more it's it's the phrase policy priorities because to me that translates to the policy goals. But from what you're saying, it's more that you'd like it to link back to the other sections of this document, if I'm understanding what you're saying.
Lynn?
So yes, I think you I think you did answer my question is what I'm getting at.
So I.
Councilor Hanke.
I thought Anna was going after the capital. How does if we have budget surpluses at the end of the year, how did the wording there make sure that departments know when its policy goals? And Bob's answer kind of went with planning for the FY 26 budget. So I guess I can't answer your question, Anna, because because I would have loved to just keep it with put it in JCPC because that's where I think you solve that problem. But I recognized when Andy proposed the rest of the wording needs not identified during the JCPC process or to accomplish policy goals, that there may be reasons why you might want something outside of the capital budget JCPC process. I think we just need to be clear to the manager and ourselves as if they come through, does it meet those? You you have identified an issue with this because those policy goals are referencing the ones that we give the manager, not policy goals outside of that. You know, one goal is adequate funding of infrastructure though, you know, there's there's a goal at least related to infrastructure management, which includes school assets too, not just municipal assets. But but you have identified some potential issue in it. So it doesn't necessarily stop what we've just gone through the last couple of meetings with the financial order proposals. But hopefully, through conversation and some of this, it it indicates that we want to minimize the financial orders outside of the JCPC process, but recognize that sometimes it might be appropriate to have one outside of that process.
Thanks, Mandy. You articulated both my question better than I did and helped me feel a bit better about it. So I appreciate that.
Okay. Councilor Ryan?
So again, just for clarification, to accomplish policy goals, does refer to the document that we'll be working on later this evening? Or does it simply refer to an internal goal that was inside of this document?
It refers to the document we're.
Working on right now.
Working on.
So it's not relating to the town manager goals document, it's relating to stated policy goals or policy, yeah, policy goals.
Well, by the way, it could say town manager goals.
It is, it relates, that's the shorthand in the summary is just policy goals. If you go to page six.
Yeah.
Or to address goals of the town council and town manager. So that is a little more clearer that it is the town manager goals that the council.
Yeah.
So it is the town.
Adopt. Yeah, it the summary was an attempted shorthand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'm going to go back to the motion. The motion is to adopt the FY 26 budget guidelines as amended. And the person who seconded said yes?
I seconded, yes.
Yes. All right. We're moving to a vote. I also just before I say yes, I want to just say thank you to the finance committee. This is always. This is always, this is one of our most important jobs and you've done a great job. Thank you so much. I am an I. Counselor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Counselor Lord.
Aye.
Pam Rooney.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Yes.
Jennifer Tobb.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Aye.
Counselor Ette.
Aye.
It is unanimous. We are going to take a 10 minute break. We will be back at.
I've got a 10 minute break.
Thirty-five. I'm giving you two more minutes, Pat, okay? Please turn off your mics and your video and turn them back on when you return. We're going to move to reconvene. As you return, please put your video back on so I know you're here. Okay, we're all here. Alicia, are you back?
Yes, thank you.
Great, thanks. All right, our next discussion is the goals. And I'm going to suggest that we go after this until 9:15 and then we see how far we get with the understanding that it very well may need to go back to GOL. Because otherwise we could be here all night. And I know none of us want to do that. So I'm going to make a motion. Actually, I'm not going to make a motion. I'm going to see where we get. Okay, with that, I'm going to call on Anna and I believe Anna and George, you two have decided how to handle this.
Yeah, so George and I are tag teaming this. I'm going to just do a quick intro and overview of, and reminder of the process that GOL went through. And then George is going to take us point by point through them, at which point we'll be seeking input from counselors on what should be added, struck, et cetera. So this isn't the first time the council has talked about this reframing or reformatting of the goals. And really it is a reformat. So the idea here was to shift the goals to be a bit more actionable by moving them into, by, well, by changing how we write action items. Instead of kind of being things that might be up to interpretation, we were really striving this year to get action items that were actionable, that were non, non-debatably achieved or not achieved by the end of the year versus achieved in a way that some people liked or didn't, or not achieved to the extent that some people expected or vice versa. So in order to do that, sorry that dog is causing havoc in this moment. In order to do that, we started with the broad goal areas and we also tried to pare those down. So we tried to eliminate some redundancies and ended up with, with the goal areas that you have in front of you. At the last GOL meeting, one of the things that GOL did, the committee also reduced the number of objectives per goal area to, to be one per goal area. In the, in the past, we had multiples in each goal area. And we shifted that down more to be, so that they're more of a definition of each goal area versus multiples within it. And, you know, the council's welcome to discuss that, but just to explain kind of where we got with the objectives. And then within each of those is an action item or multiple action items. The action items were things that we believed could be accomplished within a year or are continuations and we specify what we expect in the, in the coming year. And these were put in with input from counselors. There was some input that the committee did not decide to put in this version because it either felt like it was not actionable enough or it was too broad for, for this document. So what we would like to remind the council of is that these goals are, you know, we, we hope that folks will consider making motions to add. This is something that we could discuss for ages and ages and ages. And to remember that this is, we need a majority vote on these. We should, we should seek agreement all, but that's wonderful and great. But that ultimately we would like to continue to, to make progress and we may need to vote on individual items to, to keep them in or take them out. And that's absolutely okay. That's part of our process. So I'll turn to my fellow GOL members. This is also one of the things that we did. We had Paul with us in our last meeting to talk through the volume of goals and how he felt about us, you know, removing redundancies and really saying, these are the, the directions that we want you to go in the coming year. These are the things we'd like you and your staff to accomplish. And Paul, I won't speak for him, but he did, we were in consultation with him throughout this process. So fellow GOL folks, is there anything that I forgot before I turn it over to George to walk us through the, the areas? Okay. And I want to thank George especially for helping take the lead on this, especially since I could not be there in person tonight. George, thank you very much. It is appreciated. And I will turn it over to you.
Okay. My approach to this is to, first of all, we're going to talk about the gold areas. We have, as you see, we have collapsed them to three in the policy area. And so we may want to begin with that just to make sure that people understand why we did that and what, and if they approve of it. Then I was going to go through them goal area by goal area, first looking at the objective language to see if there are concerns or questions about the objective language in that goal area. And then proceed through the individual action items and see what people's thoughts are there. We have had some practice already this evening in trying, in working sort of by consensus. And if we can do that, to the much, the degree that we can do that, we could probably move more quickly. But there may be times where we'll simply have to stop and have a vote. At some point, there may have to be motions made. For instance, if you want to introduce something new or that would probably require a motion and a vote. But we'll see how that, that plays out. But so first of all, just with the gold areas, what we, we did is we, we took the, I think there were five in the area of policy. We collapsed them into three essentially around climate action as a single major goal area. And then we, we thought of just the idea of community, the overall health and wellbeing of the community, including social justice. So right now it reads community health, probably should be community health, comma, safety and social justice. And then the third is housing and economic vitality. The thinking there was in a community that has such a high percentage of its income essentially coming from property tax, housing is one of our major economic drivers. And so we felt that putting housing and economic vitality together was, was not a complete stretch. So that's the first sort of area to discuss. What are the thoughts about the, the goal areas?
Do you want me to call on people? Do you want me to call on people, George?
Yes, I think you should.
Counselor Hanke.
You didn't mention the management goal areas, but they're part of the goal areas. And I have a comment on one of them. Beyond the, a full recopy of the infrastructure goal area in this document that just entirely needs deleted. There was a, it was recopied twice. But, um, community and strategic relationships left the council out completely, even though the objective included the town council. So, I would retitle it Town Council, Community and Strategic Relationships. The objective there is to maintain, develop and increase positive relationships and communications with the town council, residents and local and state agencies. But the goal just said community and strategic relationships. And I do think it's important to include the town council in that.
Point of clarification, please. Would you like me to be editing these? There wasn't a motion to adopt made.
No.
So, would you like me to make edits?
Edit as if we're just having a nice conversation, you know? We're like in a retreat almost.
Okay, then I'm I'm going to ask you, Mandy, to please.
It's goal five.
It's on page five of six. Page five.
It might be shifted.
Right there. Yeah, it says community and strategic relationships. I would put town council before community. So, town council, comma, community and strategic relationships. And then just to comment below that, at least in the document we got, there was an entire repetition of that, that entire next goal area was a complete repeat.
That was corrected when I was alphabetizing. Thanks, Mandy.
So, in, I guess.
Counsel Ryan, you had also said, community health, comma.
Yes, I had suggested, community health, comma, safety, comma.
And social justice. Okay.
Thank you.
And up on the, in, on the front page, you're going to have to correct those, but why don't we just focus here? Okay? And then on goal five, would you say town council? Thank you.
Yeah, in that second, in the management goals area, again, the thought was focusing in one broad area on administration leadership. The second, focusing on infrastructure, management, maintenance and land stewardship. And then relationships, including his town council, community and strategic partners.
And under goal five, right there, after the word residents, it should have a comma. Okay, Bob Hegner. Right now, we're just focusing on the broad six goal. Okay, Kathy?
My comment, now that we've edited a couple, was I like the fact that you collapsed it this way. I think these six work, but I have a lot of comments on the specifics.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Pam Rooney?
Thank you. I actually had a little bit of a contrary thought when I look at community, comma, health, comma, and safety, health and safety and social justice. We seem to have lost, we seem to have lost the sort of the gist of the social justice goal that we used to have. And it's, it's, it's either been watered down or it's distributed amongst other items. I just, when we come back to this topic, I just, we'll have some more thoughts on that.
Okay.
And also, and also in that particular one, there's a, there's an item that says, create and submit a complete street prioritization plan.
We'll get to those later.
Okay.
We're just, right now, we're going to.
That goes over to infrastructure.
We're just going to focus on the six broad goals and any editing we want to do to those. Okay? Counselor Ette.
Is it possible to go back to the change that was made with community health, safety, comma?
Go ahead. What's your thought?
Safety in what sense?
Community safety.
Yes, so if it's community, then wouldn't it make sense to have and safety? Because the way I see it, it simply is safety and I'm wondering what exactly that means.
I see what you're saying. In other words, if community modifies or further defines safety, then it should say, community health and safety. Is that what you're suggesting?
Yes.
So, taking the word and out was, okay, got it.
Or you could just add community in front of safety. Community health, community safety and social justice.
Mm-hmm. Yes. Okay. Pam, you have your hand up. Are you on these? Okay. Okay, we're just going to take a moment and get these few changes made. And then, George, I think we're on to the actual objectives.
Well, we're going to go to goal, exactly. We'll start with climate action, but just for clarity's sake. So, the first goal area reads climate action. The second goal area now reads community health, comma, community safety and social justice. The third goal area reads housing and economic vitality. The fourth, under management goals, reads administration leadership. The fifth is infrastructure management, infrastructure management, comma, maintenance, comma, and land stewardship. And the fifth is town, actually six, town council, community, excuse me, town council, comedy, comma, immunity and strategic relationships. So, what I'm proposing is that we now go back and through, go through each goal area. And we first look at the objective language and see what people's thoughts are on that. And then we would move to the action items in that particular area and go through them one by one. And if you wish to add anything, that would be the time to do it. And we'd also look at the language of each. And you could also move to delete something. You could say, I'd like this item out. So, let's first begin with the objective language for climate action. Currently, it reads to continue to make progress on the council's climate action goals, guided by the Climate Action, Adaption and Resilience Plan, CAARP, to prepare the town to be resilient in the face of climate change.
Counselor Ette.
I moved that with strike, to prepare the town to be resilient in the face of climate change because that's redundant since CAP already has resilience as part of the plan. And this action and adaptation, everything is already in the sentence before that point.
Are there other thoughts about that? Objections to that?
I have a thought, if I may. Part of this document is public facing. It clearly is something Paul reads very carefully. It's clearly something we work very hard on and we read carefully. But at least in theory, it's something the public reads. And so, I think there might be a place in certain, in this document at certain points, especially under objective, that we perhaps go to a little bit further to make absolutely clear what we're trying to do. The average citizen perhaps doesn't really have a great grasp of what CARP is and does, even though it does say resilience plan. But then the final clause there is to make it clear that this is what we're aiming at. So, that's just a thought. I take the point that it does say resilience plan. And then it says to prepare the town to be resilient in the face of climate change. So, I can go either way. But I would just like to remind folks that this is a document that we hope the public looks at and that you can share with the public. And so, keep that in mind when we start altering at least objective language.
Okay, Anna?
I disagree with striking that framing or that that part of the sentence because I think when we think about objectives, they are the vision, right? They are the the bigger picture. And while technically it may be redundant, that is our bigger picture is to be more resilient and and proactive in the face of climate change. And so, I think for me, the, the need for that is because it feeds the the vision, right? It feeds that bigger picture. The vision isn't just to follow the CARP. We added that in because there is a plan to be resilient in the face of climate change. But I think that that second part of the sentence is really helpful in demonstrating that broader vision, that broader objective.
Pam?
Can we see the wording that was just struck, please? Yeah, so when I think of an objective, our, I think our objective here is to continue to make progress on preparing the town to be resilient in the face of climate change in part guided by the action, the the CARP. So, I think if we, if we use this phrase, it really needs to go right at the beginning. This is why we're doing it. It's not just to implement CARP, it's to be resilient.
So, you, your suggestion would be to change the objective to read, to prepare the town to be resilient in the face of climate change, continue to make progress.
Or to continue to make progress, to, to, to prepare the town to be resilient. I, you know, continue to make progress is a, is a tough thing anyway. But you could say to prepare the town to be resilient in the face of climate change.
By, by making progress on on CARP.
Well, you know, just if I may, notice also that under the action items, the last action item essentially is the CARP plan. So, one could in fact simply take the CARP plan out and simply sort of reinforcing Pam's point and also Anna's that this is about vision and objective. Essentially, the the objective or vision is to continue to make progress on the council's climate action goals in order to prepare the town to be resilient in the face of climate change. That's really what it should stay. And then in the action item, we make the point about CARP and keep working on CARP.
Yes.
So, that's what I would suggest.
So, the, so the, the objective could end at the word in the face of climate change, period.
I would suggest deleting, we can come back to this because we're going to be talking about the object, the action items in a moment. But I would suggest just deleting the language from guided to the CAARP. Just strike that language. So, it read, the objective here in climate action is to continue to make progress on the council's climate action goals, to prepare the town to be resilient in the face of climate change. That's what I would suggest. And if people are satisfied with the action item number four, that would pick that up very clearly.
Okay, Pam, you have your hand up?
I never took it down.
Kathy? Okay.
I'm okay.
Counselor Hanke? Does that fix it for you?
I'm sorry, I've, are we moving, well, within climate action, are we moving on away?
We're moving on. We're done with the objective.
Okay, we can come back to this for sure.
We're going on now to the action items, right?
We are. And I think, again, to echo Anna's point, and she can weigh in here as well as other members of GOL, the sort of criteria here that we're trying to apply is that it be specific and that either be a continuation of something that is ongoing that we want to prioritize and/or it's something that can be accomplished in one year.
I can just.
Is there any other, yeah, I'm sorry, Anna?
No, no, I was just going to say, I, if folks are pitching something, what I will ask is that you be able to tell us very clearly what completion of that action item looks like in one year's time.
Okay, Counselor Hanke.
I have three things. I'll start with something that relates to what Anna just said, which is number four. The take actions related to climate action, blah, blah, blah. What does completion specifically look like in one year's time? I don't think that one follows what, how would it be measured? So, based on what was written in the preamble of the goal is to have action items that are have no ambiguity as to whether a goal was completed by that time, by the time we get to evaluation. Nor should there be room for judgment as to whether the action item was completed in the quote, right way. I don't see how this fourth one meets that at all. And so, while I understand we need the CARP, if we're aiming for specificity, that one doesn't meet it and we should pick things within the CARP that we want done and list them out.
We did get comments from ECAC. I don't know that, I'd have to go back and look to see if those comments were specific about pieces of the CARP. Otherwise, I don't think we can do much with this in order to get to detail tonight. I think what we need to do is just make a note, either detail pieces of the CARP or figure out some other way of talking about the CARP. Okay, your other comment, your next comment?
On the one above that, I'm going to make two suggestions and I know one will be controversial. I'll make the one that I don't think is as controversial first, which is, so this is the support the development of climate action focused bylaws. I would add the phrase at the end of it that says that would reduce GHG emissions. I think we need to be specific as to what our climate fact, action focused bylaws should be doing.
Okay.
I'm open to other things they should be doing, but that was something I could think of of like, if we're going to be proposing bylaws, let's do bylaws that reduce our GHG emissions, which would help us meet our climate action goals of zero GHG emissions by 2050.
Can I ask that we spell out GHG and then put in print GHG?
Greenhouse gas.
Thank you.
The one that will be controversial, that I know will be controversial, is I want to strike solar bylaw from that. And the reason I want to strike solar bylaw is because the state just passed a climate bill. The governor just signed a climate bill. That climate bill preempts solar bylaws in towns. And we'll be having, and the state will be putting out regulations that will preempt or supersede any solar bylaws or battery storage bylaws we might do. And I personally think it is not a good use of our staff time to be continuing working on a solar bylaw until these regulations are out and in effect and all. Because otherwise, we're just going to have to double that staff time and rework them after the regulations are out. Especially since we don't have one yet. So, I think it's time we delete that next year for calendar year 26. It might be wise to put that in. But I think we should be in a wait and see what the regulations from the state are. And it's going to be six, seven, eight months till we even see drafts of them.
Thoughts? Kathy, you have your hand up?
Well, I have a question. Since Mandy's done two things now, I'll do the second one first. Will towns be allowed to be more restrictive on solar than the state? So, so I know we've put a lot of work in already. And the issue is, of course, trees and other things that do carbon sequestration and where solar goes and where the batteries go, not just the solar fields go. So, so that's a question on striking that altogether, that because the state is pending, action pending, that we shouldn't pay attention. So, that's number one. Number two, on the, I, I think you were asking for more specificity on CARP on what we think can be done. We did, the council passed the, what did you call it, stretchy stretch code is I think what Anna did, that we've got a building code that's pretty tough for anything new that's being built. So, I would like to know whether there's something else more generally we can do that affects homes, multifamily complexes, commercial buildings, transportation and energy way and waste, which is up in the waste hauler. If there isn't anything specific, I would strike it altogether. Because we, we are making an effort. The one thing I could think of doing is our, our CPAC state provisions don't include rehabbing houses and putting solar panels on them. If the state expanded a definition of what our dollars could be used on, some of those things could be used. But we don't have that ability right now. So, I'm not sure what else the town can do on these issues. That is my question on the list. I certainly like the list, but I don't know what we can do. We have an anti-idling law. Do, do people know that? We can rap on someone's doors and tell them to turn their engines off. But I don't think people. But I don't think people even know we've got one of those. We do have one.
Okay, I'm gonna go on to, well, Counselor Hanke, did you had a response to Kathy?
Yeah, so I can't give you anything of what they might do with solar. But I can talk about ADU and I won't go into too much detail because I actually have a report from the, on MMA and the ADU bylaw. The regulations for ADUs just came out. There was a seminar today from the executive office of H Housing and Livable Communities on what those regulations say, what their goals are of that. Between when the state passed the ADU law, the new ADU law, and these regulations, our town staff has been working on updating ours because we knew it was not in compliance. There are a number of those updates that are not in compliance with the regulations and therefore just can't even be enacted based on the webinar today. We don't know what the, what the state will say. For example, for the ADU, they said X things are by default unreasonable regulations. Just, and then they listed out a whole bunch of things that would be unreasonable regulation of ADU. If they do that with solar, then we can't do anything with them at all. And so I, personally, I think it's wise to wait to see what they say before we try and craft anything that might be more restrictive than what they say. Because we don't know what they're going to say, so we can't guess what we might be able to do beyond that until we see the regulations.
Okay, Anna?
So, two quick things. The first is, well, there is some slight redundancy in it. If we're going to say that would reduce greenhouse gas emissions, I'd also like to say and reduce reliance on fossil fuels. I think that it's a term that's also more understandable. I think both is, is important to have in there, but I think we, we use that framing quite often. And so if we're gonna put, yeah. So then the other thing that I, I would like to strongly object to removing any part about the, to removing anything about the CARP. And instead, go back to the ECAC report. We, we looked at it briefly, there's a lot that's kind of, we looked at it in GOL, their end of year report, not briefly, but we did look at it. And there's, there's a lot in there that they, that is ongoing or kind of they've just started in, including heat pump programs, et cetera, that we could refer to with more specificity in here, maybe after a little bit more conversation with them. So I, I just wanna advocate for getting more specificity and not removing anything about the, the CARP.
Okay, George?
So just as I pointed out, that this is a public facing document and we need to keep that in mind. I think probably the most important thing is that it's, it's a document that, that is something that Paul looks at very carefully. So whatever we put in here, it should be something that he can look at and say, okay, you know, I can, I can do something with this. And so take the, the fourth item of the CARP. We got so much input from ECAC, from climate activists, it's all welcome. But there were like 30 or 40 things. And trust me, if it goes back to GOL, we're not gonna be able to sort through this. I think we need to trust Stephanie, we need to trust ECAC, we need to trust the process. What we're saying basically in this item, as I read it, is we take it as a priority for the coming year, that Paul continue to have his staff work in these areas. And for us to try and pick out one or two or three, I think would take forever, A. And I'm not sure that we bring any particular expertise to the deciding which should be highlighted and which shouldn't. I think what this item is simply saying is that the CARP is the guide. These are the areas we'd like you to continue to be working in, so have staff continue to do what they're doing. I don't think it would be a wise use of our time for us to try to go back to GOL and come up with some very specific actions. The people who have the knowledge and expertise are not GOL, and quite frankly, they're not us either. So I would leave the language as it is. I think it gives a clear direction to Paul that this is a priority. And then he turns to his staff and has them continue to work with ECAC in trying to achieve some of these goals. I'm also wondering if item number three should just be stricken in its entirety. It's not that we're against these bylaws or for them. It's, I wonder if it's really, I mean, we already have in the objectives, a clear statement and through CARP of we're trying to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and reduce our dependency on fossil fuels. So I, I'd like one, I like two, and I like three, because they have a specificity. If there are objections to one or two, we could deal with that as a specific item. But I think three could just be stricken, and I think four is fine. We need to trust the process, we need to trust our staff, we need to trust Paul.
Jennifer?
Yes, I would, I, I do disagree with Counselor Ryan on number three. I would like, I would like to see that stay within a goal. Excuse me, the way, the waste taller bylaw became a town manager goal, I think it was last year, is because the town manager specifically requested that that be a goal. So he would know to allocate staff time and resources. So I would like to keep the waste taller bylaw. At least that be specific with, with that bylaw.
Andy?
I was basically gonna say the same thing that Jennifer just said.
Okay, Pat?
Sorry, I agree with George, the whole thing should be taken out on the support the development of climate action. I think it is in the other three. I'm particularly appalled by, and I know Mandy is expecting this, wanting to stop working on the solar bylaw and to best, particularly since we have a project that wants to have best storage in a location that would be very difficult to fight if a fire were to start. And I understand that I've been losing this battle for a long time. But if you're gonna take that one out, I don't, I personally don't support the waste hauler bylaw. But I don't, so I don't see why that should be there. I think of, you know, we're working to reduce greenhouse admissions. I don't think there should be any bylaws listed there. So I'm agreeing with George and I am appalled by the opposition to regulating solar and best storage that has surfaced over and over again in ECAC and in this council.
I'm trying to call on counselors that have not spoken to this particular one. I guess, Counselor Ette?
I'm hoping that we could rewrite the first part to be better and clearer. I think the language that begins with include in the capital inventory would be made stronger if we used update the capital inventory with criteria for the transition of municipal buildings. And I think.
I'm trying to include, oh, I'm sorry, you're in the very first one, okay?
No, let's move to the first one.
Yeah, go ahead.
And the final four words, five, in the next three years. I'm not really sure, it, when I read it, I saw it in two different ways. And so I'm hoping that we could be clearer on that is the next three years, the amount of time it'll take to update or include this capital inventory, or is the next three years about the priorities for transition that will occur over a given period of time?
So what, please go back and tell me, tell us again what changes you wanna make here.
So the first would be strike out include and go with update.
Okay.
And I'm wondering about transitions in the next three years. I read it in two different ways. Because I'm not sure if the length of time it'll take to update the capital inventory is three years or the three years is about priorities for transition.
So, when you look at this, it says update the capital inventory, criteria for the transition of municipal buildings, vehicles and equipment away from the use of fossil fuels and priorities for transition in the next three years.
So.
Can I quit?
It's reading two different ways. One is that the criteria is updated and then this is happening in the next three years? Or is the criteria being updated in the next three years? Is the transition happening in three years or is the criteria being updated?
Can I clarify, please?
Yes, please, Anna.
So, and Counselor Ette, I don't know if, if this was a conversation we, we did have at GOL because these are criteria. Initially, this goal was make, or make the plan for the, the vehicle, the, the fleet transition. And in conversation with the town manager, he discussed that what's more help, what's more helpful is actually identifying to the council what would be needed in order to do that. So we've run into this at JCPC every year when I ask Guilford why he doesn't have an electric snowplow or dump truck yet, and he says because they're not making them. So it's, this is about something that doesn't actually exist. The criteria for switching over to, away from fossil fuel consumption in our vehicle fleet, isn't actually there. So we had include because we wanted him to put it in there and help us to basically create a roadmap. Instead of banging our head against the wall again and again, saying, you know, switch it over, switch it over, switch it over. He needs to tell the council, this is what we need to do in order to switch it over. This is what needs to exist in order to switch it over. So what was written here was include in the capital inventory what that criteria is for the transition of the buildings, vehicles and equipment. In, in the next three years, I believe, was because that was the initial timeline for, for doing that, for that switch to be made. So I just wanted to clarify why that said include and not update. I have other comments, so I'm gonna keep my hand up, but there.
Okay. So, Counselor Ette, it's, so it's not an update, it's an including something in an existing inventory?
It would, sorry, it would need to say.
It's an add to the capital inventory?
It could say update if that's the word people like more, but it needs to say update it, update the capital inventory to include criteria for the transition.
Okay, thank you, to include criteria. That helps clarify.
I'm still not clear about the three years, though.
That's the, still the question is the three years. What's the three years about? Anna?
I believe that this was a, a holdover from prior goal. Again, I'm looking at Lynn, George, Frekka and Pat to, to help remember the conversation at GOL. But I believe that this was a, a holdover from prior goals, that we wanted the transition of the fleet by, of the buildings and fleet and equipment in a certain amount of time. But I'm, I'm looking to pull that up to remember. If people wanna strike it, we can strike it. I, I can't remember who it came from at GOL.
I think we need to take in the next three years out.
The only thing that, oh, you know what, I think part of it, it was a bit arbitrary, but I think this was, we wanted him to identify which of the priority areas so that in future goals, we can say, great, you said this was a priority for 2027, you said this was a priority for 2028. So I believe this was adding a bit of, of actionability here to say, you know, what is doable in set timeframe? It doesn't need to be three years, but I would advocate for keeping a timeframe in there. The council can decide what's appropriate, but I, I think that that's helpful. So I would advocate for not striking it for what it's worth. I don't know if I get to undo suggested.
Then let's put it back in, in the next three years. Okay.
Excuse me.
Counselor Hanke? I'm sorry, let me, Pat, and let's see, we've got Andy Frekka.
Yes, I, I still want to press the points because it isn't necessarily about the time in terms of years. It is about where the years, what the years relate to. That is, is it only the second half of the sentence or the entire sentence? Since what connects them is the word and.
Anna?
I'm open to grammatical suggestions. This is very much not my document. This is, this is deeply one co-created, Counselor Ette, by you in GOL. So I'm open to suggestions for, for grammatical changes as, as you all see fit.
The question is, what does the, what does next three years apply to?
That would be the priorities for transitions in the next three years. We'd like to know what the three, the, the priorities for the coming three years are. That's how I understood this. If other GOL members understand it differently, happy to hear that.
I think if you just move in the next three years to after the word priorities, that might clear it up. Priorities in the next three years for transitions.
That looks good to me.
Thank you. All right. I'm just gonna point out, we have now exceeded our time for one goal. So this is what I'm gonna suggest. And I'm gonna suggest we spend another 15 minutes, not on this, but on the objectives. And it, because we've already agreed on the six goal areas. Let's see if we can agree on the objectives.
Lynn, can I make?
And then we're gonna have to take suggestions, it's gonna have to go back to GOL. Otherwise, we'll be here till tomorrow. It, it's gonna have to come back to another meeting. There's no way we're gonna get this done in one meeting. Okay.
See, may I?
Let's, let's do this. Let's try to complete this goal area and then let's try to do the objectives and then we'll go from there, okay? What else on this goal area? George, you have your hand up.
GOL cannot recreate what we're doing. This is the only opportunity we have as a body to actually talk about what our priorities are and what we want. And to, to sort of decide if we can come to consensus on at least some of it. GOL cannot do that for this body. So sending it back to GOL is not gonna, I mean, there may be specific things we can go back and tweak, but that'll take us five minutes. And then we're back to where we started. This conversation has to take place, or else we just, yeah. So it's just gonna take time. And I don't, if somebody can think of a way to do this quicker, I'm all ears. But it is the only opportunity we have as a body to actually back and forth about what we think is important, what isn't. So that's just a thought on that. I think we had, well, we still have an issue related to the bylaws. So the question is, and I can go either way here, I'm not, but do we wanna make it a priority for Paul in the coming year to focus on specific bylaw? And some of us say yes, some of us say no, and some of us are kind of indifferent, but we need to resolve that. GOL cannot resolve that. You have to resolve it. So one option is to strike the whole thing. Another option is to keep pretty much the way it has it, support development of climate action, focused bylaws, then insert perhaps the phrase which reduce our greenhouse gas emissions, if you wish. I mean, that's in the objective, but we could put it in. Including such as waste taller bylaws, solar bylaw and other potential bylaws. Or you could strike the specific references to bylaws and just say, support development of climate action focused bylaws. Period.
Can I?
But we need to resolve this.
Okay. If we're going to work on waste taller, we need to have it in here. If we're going to do something once solar settles down at the state level, whether it's to look at our, our own local implementation, it needs to be in here. Otherwise, just saying general bylaws doesn't.
Right.
Do it, so.
But, but Lynn, do you think that, that if it's not in here at all, if we take it out completely, that somehow
I don't think.
That the waste taller bylaw will cease to move forward, that the solar bylaw will cease to move forward? They're already in motion. I guess the question to all of us is, do we as a body, at least seven of us, wanna prioritize one or more of these specific bylaws? But they're gonna go forward anyway.
No, they're not. That's the thing. If, if we say, if we strike solar bylaw here, it stops. If we strike waste taller here, it stops.
All right.
At least that's the way I interpret the goals. Okay. At least that's the way I interpret the goals. Okay. I've said enough. Anna, I'm going to go to Carol Turner Hanke.
So I guess I interpret the goals differently. If it says, support the development of climate action focused bylaws that would make, reduce greenhouse gas emissions and reliance on fossil fuels, that includes whatever bylaws are, do that. It doesn't have to say a specific bylaw. If the waste taller bylaw would reduce greenhouse gas emissions, that qualifies under that bullet point without being specifically mentioned in my mind. So if once the, if the regulations are finalized earlier than I expect them to be, and there's ability in staffing to work on solar, once there's a regulations and a potential model bylaw, that would reduce greenhouse gas emissions and reliance on fossil fuels. I don't see why we have to list specific ones in here to have the manager work on things because supporting the development of bylaws requires you working on them. So I don't see that. I had a comment on the second one. Seek climate leader, community designation and accompanying funding from DOR. And I had two questions. What is that? And is it part of the CARP? And how much money would it cost and time would it cost to do this versus the benefit that would come from it? Since it came to me out of nowhere, I just need more information about that one.
Paul, I believe you have more information on that one.
And I'll have even more information on Thursday when I meet with. So this is a designation that the state has put together to be a climate leader. It, and it commits us, it says we will attain some, many of the goals that are already in our CARP. And so when you become a climate, if we are accepted into the climate leader community, there's a subset of money that's available only to climate leader communities. And in year one, we want to be able to take, make, take, have access to that money. I don't have all the lists of things, but I can, I can share that with the council for sure.
This came from our sustainability director.
Correct.
Okay. All right.
In terms of cost to the town, I don't think there's a cost to the town.
Jennifer?
Yeah, so I would very much, I think we need to include, for all the reasons Lynn said, the specific bylaws. And I would, you know, ask the town manager, I mean, Paul was very clear that if, again, for an example, with the waste taller bylaw, if it was not a town manager goal, it would not be addressed. So I think, and we've, I'm also concerned that do we make policy decisions in this conversation? Like CRC has been working for many months per year on the solar bylaw. So we just stopped working on it now? It doesn't, it seems like that should be a discussion. Right. But if we strike that, so I don't think we make a decision in this meeting, that should be a discussion in CRC with a recommendation back to the council if we're not going to, or the council direction to CRC. But I don't think we strike the solar bylaw in this conversation or as part of the town manager goals.
Andy?
Yeah, I'm sharing your concern about how long this is going to take and whether we need to find a different way to do this, including getting these suggestions back to the committee for discussion. Having, as an example, the one that Jennifer just talked about, I had worked on it too, and I thought about different language that you could use. It's basically built on what we have. But if you said consistent with state law and regulations and as feasible, support the development of climate action focused bylaws that would reduce greenhouse gas emissions, including waste tolerance, solar bylaws, which would get rid of the need for the other category. But I mean, those kinds of editorial work, does it belong in this entire body?
And I would agree with that. But I will also tell you, when Anna asked people to send stuff, we didn't get much response. So now that we have a much more, if you will, growingly complete document, it's nowhere near done. I think we're going to have to do something where we, again, agree on the objectives and then get information on the action items. Pam Rooney?
Yeah, I'm going to ask to restore the word solar bylaw. I like Andy's rearrangement of it. It's just a little simpler. But there's a very good chance that something can come to us, whether we continue working on it or the state brings something for us to review within the next, within the next calendar year. I would like to have on the book so nobody forgets that. In fact, then staff can help with it. So it could very well come to us within the year.
So Andy, let's take the moment and please read for Athena to put in here what you just suggested for number three.
What I had suggested was consistent with state law and regulations and as feasible, comma, support the development of climate action focused bylaws that would reduce greenhouse gas emissions, comma, including the waste taller and solar bylaws. I can read, I can send that to.
Okay. And so don't take out, don't strike out solar bylaw.
No, because I think it's sufficiently qualified by consistent with state law and regulations and as feasible.
But do strike everything after solar bylaw because it doesn't, it's not applicable anymore then.
Yeah, that I took out.
Okay. All right. Let me just suggest, at this point, we have agreed on the goal area, we've agreed on the objective. We seem to have consensus on one, two, maybe three. And we're still looking for some detail on four, or we're going to just leave it the way it is. Those are, that's what I'm hearing on this goal. Anna?
Thank you. So I've got a couple notes here. First off, the, someone had asked earlier, I think Kathy, you had talked to, or someone, sorry, I don't want to miscredit. I talked about the Optin Energy Code that we got passed last year. And I just wanted to clarify, and they had asked, you know, kind of what's the next? What's the stretchier, stretchier, stretchier? There's no stretchier code necessarily, but the climate leader, community designation is, that is a next step, is a further pedestal that we could, we could climb. It's just a different center format. But for example, one of the things you have to do to be eligible to be a climate leader community is adopt the specialized Optin Code. So just to kind of clarify what that is a little bit more. And I highly encourage folks to read it. What I wanted to say is, is a bit broader here. I, I'm fully prepared to die on the hill of specificity. And I'm fully prepared to do that over the course of many meetings. I will fight for more specificity in these goals than less. Yes, this is an actionable, or this is a document that shows the broader picture of the vision for the council. That's why we have goal areas. That's why we have objectives. We have action items to be specific. Those action items need to be specific. So yes, I do think that includes having specific bylaws in there if those are things we want the town manager to work on. I take strong objection to the idea that being specific indicates a lack of trust in the town manager. That is not true, and I don't think that is fair. Having specific goals allows us to know with clarity as a body, whether something was accomplished or not. I agree that fourth goal needs more specificity, and I think that there's some good ideas from ECAC that to put in there. I think that's a really good way to tap into our committees, by the way, as an aside. When we get to the evaluation of the town manager, which is something GOL will be looking at again in terms of that process, we need to think about how we use these goals and how those translate to us evaluating the town manager at the end of the year. It is not the only use of the goals document, but it is one use of it. And I think it is a helpful use when we consider actionability and specificity of these action items. So if we just say pursue, you know, or support the development of bylaws, and the town manager has done one but not the other, we are not able to equally as a body, we're not going to come in with the same lens, right? We're not coming in saying he did what he wanted to do to meet that goal. If we say, support the development of climate, and this is just an example, but if we say, support the development of climate action bylaws, and the town manager helps with one but not the other, technically, he has helped. Technically, he has met that goal. So if we are expecting him to help with both, we need to say both. If there's more we are expecting, we need to put that in there. It's not fair of us to not be specific in these action items. And I think that is, I'm done outlining the hills that I will die on. Thank you.
Councilor Ette?
Is it possible to spell out D O R?
To do what?
Spell out D O E R in the second one.
Oh, Department of Energy and.
Something resources, environmental resources.
Energy and environmental resources or something like that.
Energy.
We'll check on it.
Department of Energy Resources.
Energy Resources.
Thank you. And I totally agree with you on that. Pat, you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you. I would like to add the fact that we need to be working on a battery, battery energy storage bylaw. And that has started. So that should be in that list of specifics for the third action item.
So it's waste taller.
Solar bylaw and.
Solar bylaw.
Battery energy storage bylaws.
Battery energy storage. Okay.
Or best, yeah, whichever. Battery energy storage system bylaw.
System.
It's a storage system bylaw.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. George, you have your hand up.
So where did that come from? I mean.
It came, it's actually been.
We have been working on it as part of the solar bylaw.
Priority as well.
And as part, as separately.
So if we're working on a bylaw, then it becomes a priority. Okay.
Well, that with the correction, consistent with state law and regulation and as feasible, if we're going to continue to work on waste taller, continue to work on the solar bylaw, you know, waiting for the state to give us information, then we need to continue to work on the battery, the energy storage bylaw.
It's been something the CRC's.
I can't hear you, George.
So I'd like to go back to item four, if I could briefly, and push back a little bit against my chair, whom I deeply respect and has really worked very hard. And I like this format and I hope we will keep it. But I, I had six pages of densely, you know, dense text from three different or four different sources on what should be done related to climate action goals. And trust me, there's no way, if you send this back to GOL, that we're going to be able to sort through that and come up with specific actions. We just don't have the expertise. And again, I would ask that we keep the language we have here and trust in our, in Stephanie and our staff. These are, this lacks specificity in a sense, but essentially it gives them some room in which to work. We certainly don't expect Paul to come back and tick off every single one of these items. But what we're looking for is work in this broad area, making use of the expertise he has in his staff and the time and energy he has. If you send this back to GOL, I don't know what we're going to do with it. Maybe our chair has a plan, but I had six pages and I simply, we finally just, this is what we came up with. And I think we should hang on to it.
Councilor Hanke?
If we're not going to change number four, we should just delete it and add back in the deleted language from the objective. Because the objective would say be guided by it, because number four in action items is just guiding action. It's not anything specific. It doesn't help us. And to answer your question, if this is the format we're going with, I expect every action item to be completed. I don't want to have to write in another year that we adopted these goals expecting that only a third of them would be completed because there were too many of them. So you can't complete number four because it's not specific enough. And so then it should probably be fully deleted, but then add the CARP back into the objective.
Anna, did you have a comment on that?
Sure. I mean, yes, I sure do. So I think the, of course I do. I disagree with moving it into the objective. I'm agreeing and disagreeing with Mandy. So yes, I also expect all of the things in the action items to be complete in a year. That's why we are writing them in action items for this year's goals. If we expect it partially completed, we should specify that we, this will take multiple years. I think though, that I don't want to take this out of action. Happy to die on the hill of not getting more specific here, fine. But I don't want to take this out of action items. I just want folks, because when we go to evaluate the town manager, we're looking at action items. We, the action items are all in the direction of the outcome, right? We're not evaluating the outcome in that same way. We are evaluating completion of action items. Hypothetically, I guess, we probably would have to all decide that. So what I need us to agree to is if we are not going to be more specific in this fourth one, I think that what people need to understand is this means anything the town manager does, as long as it's aligned with the CARP checkbox, and we've achieved that goal. If folks are comfortable with that, leave it as is. That, but just to be clear, you cannot then have a different expectation that you're not sharing with the full group. So if you have a full expectation, just like Pat did, put it out there and we can add it up. Or if you have a specific part of the CARP that you want highlighted, put it out there. But if, I want this to stay in here because I think that it gives, gives that latitude that George was saying. I would love to get more specific and focus on ECAC goals as identified. But I don't want to remove it from an action item. Just want people to realize any progress counts as completing this action item.
I'm going to suggest for the sake of time at this point, that we, we go with what we have up here for climate action. That means the goal area, the objective and the four action items. Okay? George, you have your hand up.
Well, GOL certainly take this language and fine tune it and with what we have in front of us. And then bring it back. That we could do. And it sounds like the chair is also suggesting that perhaps, I'm not looking forward to this, but perhaps we could find some more specific action items under item number four and come back with those.
Okay. Let's go on and just have brief discussion on the actual objective statement under community health, community safety and social justice. Comments? George?
Well, so just to read it, I take it we're discussing or reviewing, to ensure the health and safety of the residents of Amherst and continue making advances in racial equity and social justice.
Comments? Okay, moving on. Next one?
Well, I.
Oh, Kathy, you have your hand up?
Lynn, at this point, we're not talking about the list, the green list?
No, we're not. We're just going to focus on the objective.
Just for my benefits, I have comments a lot on the green list, including where did some of these come from? We've never had a discussion about them at all. So how are we going to, how are we going to do that? You know, just so I understood what the GOL process was. It was working off old lists and things we've been working on, give comments, not dream up something that we've never talked about and put it on a list. So, and I'm not saying these are necessarily bad ideas. I just don't know where they came from. So are we talking about that next month?
We're going to have to.
I can clarify that point, too, Lynn.
Anna?
These did come from counselors, some members of GOL, some not. I, the message of don't put anything new in here is not one that I, I apologize if that was the message that was put out. That was not the intended message. People are welcome to include new ideas that weren't from previous goals. We were also drawing forward from prior year goals. So it was all of that. And I think that Kathy, to get to your point, the timing of the goals document and the way that it informs the year, this is a place where people can bring forward something and the council could discuss it and decide that they want to pursue it. Because what we've seen in the past, and I think this is partially why, I'm guessing, some folks are advocating so strongly for waste taller, is that this is a plan for, in some ways, a way for the town manager to plan out his and his staff's time in the coming year. And it's important to know if something is going to be taking up that time. So there are things in here that the council has not discussed, and that's why the council should discuss each item and vote on it. Even if we know that more specifics are needed, it's a question of, you know, is this.
Even if we know that more specifics are needed, it's a question of, you know, is this something that we want to ask the town manager to spend time on, in the coming year, knowing it might then fail even at a referral vote from the council? But otherwise, I think we're setting ourselves up for the possibility that we've created the goals, and something new comes up, and we haven't ever talked about it before, and so it's not a policy priority.
So Lynn, I'm okay with focusing on the blue. And my, my point about the green, just so people know, is that we think we've given too big a list, to-do list. So putting new things on a to-do list, that require staff time is what I've been looking at.
Absolutely.
So that, so, so it's the green that I really focused on a lot, on, do we need to do this? Why? It's time-consuming.
Thank you.
And what's the motivation for doing it? So, so that's, that's, I'm not questioning, I may be questioning whether this delegation of everything to GOL and everyone should send things in is a good way of proceeding. But in any case, I'm willing to focus on blue right now. But I think the green is much more problematic for me, and I didn't think in terms of wordsmithing. I thought in terms of the whole concept, however it was written.
I would agree with you. The green is where the meat is, and it is where we need to have most of the discussion. What I'd like us to do is get to the point that we've agreed we have these six goals. Do we have six objectives that go with those goals? And then we're going to have to take time at future council meetings, as early as possible in the new year, to settle on these, because you cannot go forward without having the goals settled. Actions settled. Thank you. Actions settled. Pat, you have your hand up.
Thank you. I'm wondering whether or not we actually need to set up a retreat time to work on the specific items. It seems kind of, you know, I, doing this at the next so many council meetings is really not very productive. I think we need to put real time aside as a group.
So we can start pulling for a retreat in January? Okay?
This is a body that hasn't been able to find a date to just take a picture.
I...
I'm going to really be surprised if we can find a date where all 13 of us are going to be around for retreat. But, I mean, I understand the problem, but I don't see any way around it. This is hard, long work. It takes time.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, but...
That's fine. We're going, is there any, any additional comment on the blue area under community health and community safety and social justice? Seeing none, I'm going to the next one. Housing and economic development.
So I will read it.
Please.
"To ensure the present and future economic well-being of the town, ensure, and ensure access to safe, com, affordable, and attainable housing for the low and moderate income residents as set forth in the town council's comprehensive housing policy."
Comments? Next one? George?
So now we're into management goals. This is under administration and leadership. Effectively and appropriately administer the operations and finances of the town, I assume, pursuant to the Home Rule Charter. Ensure the town's strong financial and fiscal health. Not sure what the difference is there. And effectively develop, supervise, and manage the town's workforce, fostering a proactive anti-racist culture throughout town departments.
So we added the word "the"?
I would add the word "the."
Counselor.
I'm not sure there's any difference between financial and fiscal.
So let's choose one. Strong fiscal health, financial health, okay? Strong financial health.
All right.
Okay. Counselor Hanke, you have your hand up.
I was actually going to say, why do we need the "ensure the town's strong financial health" at all when we talk about appropriately and effectively administer the finances of the town? Isn't, aren't those too redundant completely?
Yeah.
Well, it might have more...
Mostly redundant.
I mean, there's the day-to-day, just the year-to-year budget, and then there's the longer-range issue. And so I take the second phrase, "Ensure the town's strong financial health," to be a sort of a longer-term process, as opposed to just administering the operations and maybe, I mean, I think this is sort of replacing, you know, balance the budget, which seems kind of like a no-brainer. So that was my only thought, that the second clause could be construed or should be understood as the sort of overall long-range picture.
So Athena has typed in "long-term financial health," which I think does get after issues like bond rating, et cetera. Man, Counselor Hanke, did you have something else on that?
I did. In the managers' evaluations and the comments we received from staff this year, there were a lot of comments that related to not just anti-racist culture, but discriminatory culture. So discrimination and implicit bias and other things, and not just based on race and culture that we had some employees discussing. And so I think it would be worth broadening from just a proactive anti-racist culture to a proactive anti-discrimination. And I don't know how I'd word it, but broadening that. We had a number of comments relating to gender discrimination and other types of discrimination. And I think particularly in an objective, we need to acknowledge that our, that in administration and leadership, we should be fostering a culture that is free from all discrimination and all implicit bias.
So the town clerk has suggested the following, fostering a proactive anti-racist, non-discriminatory culture throughout town departments. Does that do it?
Seems to.
Pat, you have your hand up.
Thank you. I'm not sure whether this is the goal or an action item, but after reviewing a lot of the town manager evaluation, I feel like within the goal, it should say something like, "And manage the town's workforce." And before fostering a proactive anti-racist, adding, "By playing an active and decisive role in mediating disagreement between departments and addressing the interpersonal situations that arise in the work environment." And fostering a proactive, because I feel strongly that there's been a lot of feedback about decisiveness and responsiveness to issues and tensions between departments. So I'm not sure whether that's an active, an action item or should be part of the goal. And I feel, also, I want to say to Paul that I have great respect for him. So this is not coming from a lack of respect, but a lack of caring and wanting to see him act as strongly as he possibly can to create a work environment that supports his staff.
So I, it does seem to me that that should be more of an action item. And if you would, please write up an action item that goes with that. Okay?
I will.
All right. Are there any other comments on this one? Then going to the next.
"Under infrastructure management, maintenance, and land stewardship, the objective is to maintain and manage the town's capital and public assets."
This, by the way, is the place where we have now moved all capital projects, including the big ones. Pat, you have your hand up?
Forgot to take it down, sorry.
Thank you. Move to the next one.
And so the final goal category is community, excuse me, town council, comma, community, and strategic relationships, and the objective here is to maintain, develop, and increase positive relationships and communications with the town council, residents, and local and state entities.
Comma right there. Comments on this? Then I think, yes, go ahead. Kathy?
Sorry, I've been trying to avoid this, but the strategic relationships piece is pretty important. It's in the pink, so I'm not sure it needs to be in the blue. But in the blue, it sounds like we just all want to get along. If I, if I read the blue.
I'm sorry. So what, what are you suggesting?
So it says, "Town, county, council, community, and strategic relationships." Then we have positive relationships with all the different people. But this idea of, we actually want a strategic agreements with some of these partners. So I'm not, I'm trying to avoid wordsmithing. The pink says what I need it to say. The blue is missing some words.
Okay. What do you want to put in the blue?
I don't know. As long as we all think strategic relationships is important, then when I look over in the green, I expect to see them. So that's all I'm, I'm saying, George, is that if you read the blue, it says we should all get along. I'm sorry to be shorthand about it. So I'm not sure it needs to be changed, Lynn.
Okay.
You know, I understand what, 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 what the structure is trying to do, but on this one, you're missing part of what we want.
Okay. Anna, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I mean, I think, Kathy, I do see what you're saying. Because it's so sandwiched by the, the strategic points, because we specifically have pursued strategic partnerships and in the, in the action items and strategic in the goal area title, I don't think that it's forgotten. I also would say that positive relationships includes those agreements, right? And so I, I think in order to, to have a positive relationship that's mutually beneficial, I would, my, my interpretation would be that that includes it. But GOL could explore more ways to specifically call it out if, if that's what folks would like us to do. I just, just to, I think, ease any mind concerns, having it in both places, for me, does cover it, but I do see what you're saying.
As I said, I'm okay with the way it is. It's just a little odd.
Let's make sure we don't lose something over in the action items. Okay. I'm, I think at this point, GOL needs to come up with a strategy for how we're going to complete that. That may include, in fact, a retreat. And we'll go back to GOL to work on that. Okay?
Sorry, what is GOL working on now?
A strategy for how we're going to complete this.
It's going to take up a lot of time.
Yes.
Should we be sending our comments to Anna as GOL chair?
That was my request.
That's well appreciated, but then it comes back here, and we're going to have to talk about it. And it's going to take a lot of time.
Right. Might I, might I, a request as the chair of GOL, yes, please send your comments. If you, I would especially like wordsmithing comments, grammatical comments. If you catch typos, I know we made typos, please. That's what I would really like in a track changed document. If you have specifics on action items that you'd like changed, things, that's where GOL will have to have a larger conversation, because I agree with George that GOL can, can make suggestions and suggestions and suggestions that the five of us think are really great, and then, you know, get them torn apart when the body of 13 comes together. So know that, send us your suggestions. Please always send them as a track changes. I want to highlight Counselor Hanke for doing that throughout this process, and thank you very much for sending them as track changes. Makes our lives a lot easier to kind of go through. But know that we kind of try to include things after discussion. We'll probably have to have a larger conversation as a council. I would love that larger conversation to not get bogged down by, by like the grammatical discussion, so please send those, prioritize those for sure.
We will send you the full document as it stands after today's discussion. Kathy?
Yeah. I, thank you, Mandy, for asking that, because I have specifics, including, delete this, why is this here? So I will, I'm going to avoid wordsmithing altogether, because I think the content is more important. So I would hope that we would all do that at a minimum. And I can, I can imagine where some of the specific actions came from in terms of which human being, which, which council member, on different pieces. But, but I'm going to do, I think my perception of these goals should be something that we have discussed at some point in some group, and we would like to get it done, rather than bringing in a brand-new issue. So that's my perspective on looking at the action. I like what the structure a lot, Anna, that you've come up with, you know, in actions. But I think there should be some agreement that, some agreement by several people that it's an action we want to see.
Thank you.
Kathy?
Yes, thank you. I have gone beyond my physical limit, so I am going to have to leave the meeting. So thank you.
Thank you for joining us tonight. All right. We are going to move to our next agenda item, and believe it or not, there's not much after this, because most of it got done on consent. The next agenda item is town manager compensation. I'm going to read a motion, seek a second. "To affirm the town council's December 2, 2024 vote in executive session to grant the town manager a 2.5% cost of living increase with an additional 0.5% performance increase for a total of 3%." Is there a second?
Second, Rooney.
Is there any discussion or comment? Seeing none, we're moving to a vote. Counselor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Counselor Lord.
Aye.
Pam Rooney.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Abstained because I wasn't there for the discussion.
Andy Steinberg.
Yes.
Jennifer Taub.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis is absent. Anna Devlin-Goth here.
Aye.
Counselor Ette.
Aye.
Lynn Griesmer is an aye. It is 11 in favor, one abstention, and one absent. Okay. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you very much.
All right. They, with regard to our agenda, let me try to find it. We have done the other, the rest of the action items under consent. We, Kathy, I think we'll just delay percent for our discussion.
Yeah, we, we can. Just so everyone, Lynn put it in the packet, we have a percent for art. The school is eligible for it. So the discussion is, are we going to do it? And I can speak to it for about three minutes at the next meeting. It's not urgent that we do it now.
Right. Fine. So that's the January 13th. Okay. In your packet is the same document that we've provided every year, which describes using both the charter and the rules of procedure, the role of the president and the vice president. Are there any questions or comments? Okay. We've done the appointments. We're going on to committee and liaison reports. CRC, Pam Rooney.
CRC is currently in a public hearing on University Drive Overlay District, and still has solar bylaw on our plate.
Any questions of CRC? Elementary School Building Committee, Kathy?
We're meeting this Friday at 9:00 a.m., and we'll have an update on the contracting bidding process, where we are. The next meeting, we're, we're down to, down to, we'll, we'll be meeting once a month. And so Friday's meeting is the last of this year, and the next one will be three weeks in the 25th.
Okay. Finance Committee, Bob Hegner.
Yeah, we're meeting tomorrow to discuss, have an initial discussion of the models that we have for the four capital projects.
Okay. Okay. GOL, Anna?
GOL is meeting on Thursday. Looks like we might be talking about the goals a little bit. And then we've got some, we should have some proclamations. I think, I'm, I'm looking to see if the referral came through, Lynn, of the Martin Luther King Day one to GOL, so that should be honored as well.
We have that one, and, but we've not surfaced Black History Month yet.
No, we're going to do that at, stay tuned. It will be done.
We're going to do that when? January?
Yeah, that was the plan.
Okay.
That was my plan.
Jones Library Building Committee.
There has not been a meeting.
Okay. TSO, Andy?
We had a, a very interesting meeting. It was a joint meeting with transportation advisory committee and the disability access advisory committee on Thursday of last week regarding the Southeast Street elementary school.
All right, Andy, I can't really, I think you lost your mic. I can't really hear you.
Okay, well, I'll try again with the microphone closer. We had a meeting last week. It was a joint meeting with TSO, PAC and DAAC regarding Southeast Street Elementary School access discussion that was initiated with one proposal that had come from the town manager and Public Works and had been recommended by a consultant that was hired. It was a long and interesting discussion. I don't think that I could summarize it in the amount of time you want me to spend tonight, and I won't. But let me just summarize it in the simplest way is that the concern was is that the focus of the, of the presentation that was made in support of the plan was all about traffic flow, which is just one element, and it left out the elements of pedestrians, bicycle riders and schoolchildren and how they fit in. And whether the proposal met their needs and safety. We also had the presence of the facilities director from the schools who was able to speak about the about it from the school perspective. So it's back to the committee and ultimately the other two committees because essentially, we've been advised that if this plan is deficient, that we need to provide more specificity. We will have that discussion when we meet on Thursday. A second part of the discussion is the other half of our committee's title outreach. And we are going to be meeting with the communications director from the town, Samantha Giffens. And she's gonna help us to talk about how we inform the public on projects like this one focusing on the Southeast Street and talk about how we might engage the community in providing input as that proceeds. And then we're continuing to work on the Transportation and Parking Commission proposal. So those are, that's what the agenda item is for our final reading of this calendar year.
Thank you. Liaison reports. Councilor Hanke, did you have a question?
No, I have a report. I'm not on a liaison to any committee on this list, but I am on the MMA Policy Committee on municipal and regional services. That policy committee has been the one that has been on the municipal at the MMA discussing the ADU state law that went into effect and now the regulations that are out. The regulations came out last week. They can be found on the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities website, or if you want to go be really quick, they've been published in this week's planning board packet. But they are out. They will be, one, the, the goal is to adopt them, have the state have them in effect by the February 2nd official effective date of the state law. There was a webinar given by that executive office today and last Tuesday. Last Tuesday's webinar presentation is online already. I don't know whether they recorded each of them so that you could see the, but, but one, at least the documents are online. I attended today's and there were over 400 people at that one, apparently. My MMA Policy Committee is meeting this Wednesday at 10:30 to discuss what the MMA might want to submit as comments to the executive office on those regulations. So if you guys have any comments or thoughts on those regulations or things that I should be talking to the MMA about or concerns regarding the regulations, please get those comments to me by tomorrow evening so that I can read them and be ready for Tuesday, Wednesday morning's meeting that I'm having with my policy committee.
Could you please send us both a link for the proposed regulations and a link for the presentation?
I haven't found the presentation. I went to today's. I don't know, I don't have.
Oh, you mentioned something was.
They said it was online. I don't know where online myself, because I haven't looked. So I guess I could look for it. The link, just go to this week's planning board packet. The regulations are in it.
Okay.
This week's, tomorrow, well, the meeting for the planning board is Wednesday, I believe, but the, the regulations are in that packet. Nate has them. I sent them to Nate and for the webinar. I, yeah, I don't know. I, I have not received a link to it from my attendance today. If I do, I can forward it on to the council, but I've not received the one for today. But the regs are in this week's planning board packet.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Lord?
Thank you. I'm, I'm speaking on behalf of my liaison to the Community Safety and Social Justice Committee. And they have written us to implore, strongly, strongly advise us to use the remainder of the $500,000 that was set up for a youth empowerment center, which is $454,000 for that purpose, to continue forward in the, the goal of having a youth empowerment center. Thanks.
Any other liaison reports? Councilor Lord, you have your hand up. Okay. I'm, in the future, I'm gonna add under committee, committee and liaison reports, the MMA committees. If the council, if the town clerk to the town council would remind me I said that. Thank you. We've done the minutes. Town managers' report. There's no written report. Paul, any highlights?
Yeah, so first, I just want to thank the council for the work that you put into my performance review and for your vote tonight. I appreciate it. And I'll use the information you give me to improve my performance. It's truly a privilege to work for the town. And I think what's, one of the things I found interesting is your conversation tonight about goals talks about the ambition the town has, which makes it exciting for all of us to work here. So just appreciate the work and it is going to take time, George. But I think that that's, that's what part of the work is. So we do, I do want to recognize the work of the council because you put in enormous amounts of time and it does feed down into the staff. So we appreciate that work. On subject matters, the Mass Board of Library Commissioners extended the, the bill, the time to use their grant by three months to the end of March. The Attorney General denied the two bid protests of the school. So as Kathy said, we're now in negotiations with the low bidder to get to a contract amendment since there's been a delay. There's, there's some financial consequences and timing consequences that we're trying to work through with the low bidder. The four towns meeting, I think if someone's gonna report on that, that was a really good meeting. And just to highlight, just to note, the next four towns meeting is February 8th, I think they announced.
Yes.
So we just put it on our calendar so people know that that will be the next time I think that we will have a real substantive discussion about revenue and projections and things like that. And also just, I've been nominated to be on the Maya Health Board of Trustees, so that'll be voted on in January. And that's a, we're really happy to be on that board. That's it.
Are there any questions with the town manager? Yes. Pam Rooney?
Thank you. Councilor Lord just mentioned the, the ARPA funds. And I wonder if we can ask for an update on what's the expectation with ARPA funds that either need to be obligated, have not been obligated? What, what's outstanding and what are your proposals?
Please.
So what, we are taking a very defensive posture for our, our funds, given the change of administration in Washington and given the status of our community, both as a college town, a sanctuary community, blue state, blue, blue town and blue state. I'm fearful of clawback of funds. So what we're going to do, and we're working on right now, and I'll come to the council after the New Year to report on this, is to secure every dime that we've gotten from the federal government so we don't lose it. What that means is that it will probably fall to free cash and any money that comes out of it will have to be appropriate, will be appropriated by the town council. So we have identified the projects that we had hoped to do, including the youth empowerment center and senior center, things like that. And when I, we make the report to you in January, we'll out, we'll say, here's what the money, we had intended the money to be used for. But out of a trying to be cautious and recognizing that the day, the rules that the Biden administration had put in place that allowed us to use it over the next two years may be rescinded. And so I think it's, it's in the best financial interest of the town that we secure it by having it go in what we call revenue replacement, which means it will fall to free cash and then it'd be available for appropriation by the council. But we'll give you a more detailed summary of all that and what that looks like come January.
Are there other questions of the town manager? Okay. We've approved the minutes. I'm, I'm going backwards. You have a written report from me as president. Are there any questions? I do have a, under the future agenda items, we meet again on the 13th. At the beginning of the meeting, we'll open the meeting, have the election of president and vice president and the swearing in. We then move to a public forum on items outside the budget cycle. This includes the CPA high school field and track, or track and field. DPW sidewalk plow, which was a reduced financial order and the other DPW enterprise funds that were passed by the finance committee. Under resolutions, we have the MLK and also a fairness for farm workers resolution. Anna?
It's not completed yet. So if it gets referred to GOL by tomorrow, then meaning if it gets to you and referred to GOL by tomorrow, then that will be there. But if not, it won't.
Okay. And then under actions are the financial orders that we will have had the public forum on. Clearly, the finance committee will have to determine whether they have any changes in their votes. Continued discussion of town manager goals. I don't even want to go there right now. And the Southeast Street quadruple roundabout, if ready. I doubt it. It won't be ready. All right. And any written town manager reports at that point? Are there council comments? Kathy, you have your hand up.
Just a quick one, Lynn. I think we're only on our committees for one year, so we have to then say what committees we want to be on.
That, you know, that happens after the election of the president or vice president. Athena and I have discussed this. Because we are continuing as a council, you can meet between now and the 13th. Until committees are reappointed.
The committees are the way they are until they're not.
Until they're changed, until they're not. How's that? Bob Hegner?
I just want to, I just wanted to thank the finance committee for all their hard work just developing the budget guidelines. And I also want to give a call out to Melissa Zdowski because she's very good and has been very helpful to the finance committee. So.
Nice. Thank you. Andy?
Yeah, I'll just change the subject real quickly. For those of you who are going to the MMA conference now called Connect 351, we probably should at least find out who amongst us is going and how we coordinate. But I also actually was wanting to point to one session in particular. I think that we've all been aware of the concern in our own regional school district and in our local schools about the rise in costs of educate, providing education. This is actually a statewide issue as we often talk about at the MMA fiscal policy committee discussions. And there's a session that is exactly on this topic. And one of the panelists of that session is Sean Mangano. And Sean will bring to that session whether he shares it or not, a lot of knowledge about the pressures that have gone on within our schools because of his roles that he's played in hammers. So I just wanted to point out for people who are going to attend the conference to look out for that particular session.
Compared to the position he's in now, where he gets a lot of money.
And if you have not yet let Angela know, if you plan to register, please do so as soon as possible.
Yes, and make sure you make your, make sure you make your hotel reservation. Councilor Ette?
This is just a quick comment to say thank you to the entire council. It's been a year in this position. And I've already begun to get some gray hair, but I thank you for your, your patience. It's, there's a learning curve to this. And for the discussions that we've had spirited, but all for the good, I think, of the town. And I'd also just want to wish the town and the council us a wonderful holiday season.
Thank you. Very nice. Are there any other questions, comments or requests? And thank you for the cookies. There you go. We have to put them on the agenda if you say that. Okay, any other comments? If not, I'm making a motion to adjourn and seek a second. Second. Jesus, I think we're a little eager to get out of here. All right. In this case, we start with Bob Hegner.
Yep, aye.
Councilor Lord?
Aye.
Pam Rooney?
Yes.
Councilor Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Andy Steinberg? Yeah, he said yes. Jennifer Taub?
Yes.
Councilor Walker?
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis is absent. Anna Devlin-Goth here?
Aye.
Councilor Ette?
Aye.
Lynn Griesmer is, aye. Councilor Hanke?
Aye.
It's unanimous with one absent. Happy holidays.